When I was trying to log in, I go, oh no, and I kept logging out and getting back on.
Me too.
That was funny because I was sitting here for the longest time all by myself and I'm like, what's going on? And then I looked at the participants and I was like, oh. They're like hanging out on the other side.
Yeah, and of course I start, oh no, am I gonna have to reboot and not have enough time? Last time I rebooted, it took my computer like 15 minutes to update, so that's scary.
Hey Casey, just a heads up, I've been having to promote people from attendee to panelist. So I just, if you see people hanging out over there, will you move them? If you, okay. I, 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 I will tell you-
Almost did by Diane VanderWaal.
Me too. I grazed over Diane's name and I was like, oh, I need to promote her and I'm like, wait a minute.
I just did the same thing.
Alright, I made it. Just in time. Has anyone heard from Commissioner West? Like, are we expecting him or?
I, I don't know that we're not.
Okay.
Oh. Is Commissioner West Kyle?
I wasn't, I wasn't sure if that was him or potentially a Kyle for public comments, so.
Oh, yes. Um, you know what? I'm gonna promote and see what happens because I don't want to not.
There.
Commissioner West, is that you showing up as Kyle?
I'm gonna go with probably not.
Okay, I, we, we probably need to move. Need to move that individual back out.
Looking at the attendees list, there's a Commissioner West now.
Oh, perfect, there he is.
Awesome.
Alright, once he gets in here, we'll get started. Okay, so, looks like we have everybody. So I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Sparks Planning Commission on May the 6th at 6:02 PM. Madam Secretary, can we please have the roll?
Commissioner Pritzos.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Andriola.
Present.
Commissioner Carey.
Present.
Commissioner Kramer.
Here.
Commissioner Rossin.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Assistant City Attorney Brandon Sendal.
Here.
Assistant Community Services Director Armando Anales.
Here.
Alright, so everyone appears to be here. So we will move on to item three, which is public comment. Before I open public comment, I want to make a quick announcement about this. So this is general public comment. And for all of those listening, there will be specific public comment times for the three public comment items later in the agenda. We have received a great deal of public comment for this meeting and most of it submitted through email. And for those who did submit through email, they have been asked whether they would prefer that the secretary read their email out loud into the record or if they want, wished to speak live. For those who have opted to have the secretary read their emails into the record, that will count as their official public comment. For those who opted not to have the secretary read their emails, they will be allowed to speak live once the emails have been finished. Because of the rather high volume, the secretary is going to stick pretty strictly to the three-minute rule. However, if your email cannot be finished in the three minutes, be assured that it is in its entirety still part of the public record and has been made available to both myself and the other members of the commission before the meeting. And so with that, Madam Secretary, could you read the public comment announcement?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. I'd like to take a minute to share how to speak during public comment. There are five separate public comments for this meeting. The commission will take general public comment during agenda items number three and number 10. In addition, the commission will take public comments specific to public hearing items number six, seven, and eight. If you wish to speak during any of these public comment periods, you will need to call in. The telephone number and meeting ID is shown here on your screen. There, this will join you by audio to the meeting. You will then be prompted by the chair or the secretary when public comment is open to, to press star nine or use the raise your hand feature in Zoom. Individuals shall limit their comments to three minutes per Nevada revised statute 2.410.20. Several emails have been received on public hearing items number six and number seven. These will be read aloud at the beginning of the public comment period. These emails will also be given three minutes. The dial-in numbers will be repeated at the beginning of each public comment period. Please be prepared to write them down should you wish to speak. For those of you who do not have access or are only listening to this meeting, I will read the dial-in number. It is 1-669-900-6833 and the meeting ID number is 918-6277-1011. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Madam Secretary. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak at this time?
I have no requests to speak at this time.
Alright, then with that, we will close this first public comment and move on to our next item, which is approval of the agenda. Do I have?
Chair-
Yes, Commissioner Reed.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. I would like to suggest that we shift the agenda a bit due to the large number of public comments we already have for item six and seven. I suggest we move item eight ahead of six since that item won't take as long.
Alright, do you wanna phrase that a bit more?
Okay, I make, I make a motion that we move item eight ahead of item six and seven in the agenda.
Alright, is there a second?
Please clarify that you're moving to approve the agenda with that change, Commissioner Reed.
Yes, I move we approve the agenda with the change of moving item eight ahead of item six and seven.
Okay, Commissioner West.
I will second that motion.
Alright, we have a motion by Commissioner Reed and a second by Commissioner West. Any discussion? Alright, well, seen none, and we have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Pritzos.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Andriola.
Aye.
Commissioner Carey.
Aye.
Commissioner Kramer.
Aye.
Commissioner Rossin.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Alright, motion passes unanimously. So we will now move on to item five, which is approval of the minutes. So we'll start with the review and possible approval of the minutes of the April 13th, 2021 study, study session meeting. Can I get a motion on that?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Kramer.
I moved that we approve the minutes of the study session of April 13th.
Alright, we have a second.
I'll second it.
Alright, so we have a motion by Commissioner Kramer and a second by Commissioner Andriola. Any further discussion? Alright, seen none, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner Pritzos.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Andriola.
Aye.
Commissioner Carey.
Aye.
Commissioner Kramer.
Aye.
Commissioner Rossin.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Alright, motion passes unanimously. So moving on to review and possible approval of the minutes of the April 15th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner West.
Um, yes, Chair Pritzos, I move that we approve these minutes from April 15th.
Alright, can I get a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Alright, we have a motion by Commissioner West and a second by Commissioner Kramer. Any further discussion? Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just quickly, want to thank the staff and our consultant putting together the, these minutes, 121 pages. It was a lot of discussion, well done, thank you.
Yes, thank you always to our staff for all the great work they do. Any other discussion? Alright, seen none, we've had the motion, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner Pritzos.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Andriola. You're muted.
I said aye too fast, aye.
Commissioner Kramer.
Aye.
Commissioner Rossin.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Carey.
Aye.
Alright, motion passes unanimously. So we are now moving on to our public hearing items. As per the amendment to the agenda, we will hear item eight first, which is now, I suppose, item six technically, CA dash two dash two one.
Good, good evening, Chair Pritzos, Sparks Planning Commission. Jim Rundell, Planning Manager, here to present on this item today. Staff is in front of you today to recommend the Planning Commission consider amendments to the Sparks Municipal Code for Temporary Outdoor Processing. I'm gonna do my best this after this evening to give you context on just what is outdoor processing, explain why it was identified as a potential code amendment, outline the process that staff went through to propose these amendments to the Planning Commission, and then provide context on the standards that are associated with the amendments that are in your packet. And so what is outdoor processing? Chair, I'm gonna try to share my screen. Did that bring up the PowerPoint?
Yep.
Outdoor processing, just what is it? Well, it is when, when there is a request to do rock or concrete crushing, which engages in the reduction of that rock or concrete to a smaller size to be used as gravel or fill. A very simple, very simple context. And as you remember, on Tuesday, we talked about the video that went out to the public and that video depicted a large crusher and machinery was loading that crusher with large rocks and it was breaking it down into smaller rocks. Ultimately, those rocks got there from grading.
Mr. Chairman, sorry, sorry, Jim. I'm having a hard, I'm having a hard time seeing this presentation. Would it be possible for staff to go to the, the display view? I think you're using, you got a couple monitors and we're only seeing, not seeing the full slide.
It's in the display view and all there is is the one slide, but it's not showing?
That actually made it bigger for me. Did that help for you, Commissioner Carey?
Yeah, that makes it a little, little bit bigger.
Alright, we'll just, we'll just go with it in this view then. If that works, Chair Pritzos and-
Yeah, that's fine.
The, the video we reviewed on Tuesday at the study session depicted the, a typical rock crushing operation, a temporary rock crushing operation where a loader filled a rock crusher with large rocks and it broke them down into small rocks. Ultimately, those came out on a conveyor belt and will be able to be put back down on the same site which they were graded from. So why does, why does this code need to be amended? Well, I've got highlighted on this slide, hopefully you can see that highlighted component. Can you see that, Chair Pritzos?
Yes.
The highlighted component identifies that currently the Sparks Municipal Code does not allow for temporary outdoor processing if it is on land that is zoned residential. Now, many of the people in the development community believe that this meant they could not do it if they were within 500 feet of a house or from 500 feet of a home. However, the key component on this standard, it is within 500 feet of land zone residential. And so oftentimes, the recent projects that the, that the development community wants to do these on, potentially Stone Brook Pioneer Meadows, that is land that is zoned residential. And even if it doesn't have one home, within 500 feet of it, it is still zoned residential and therefore, they could not operate temporary outdoor processing because it was on land zoned residential. So that's why we're here today. Now, we want to make sure that this use is only utilized on a temporary basis. And I'm gonna stop my share, chair, since it's not coming up that well anyway. We want to make sure that this type of use could only be utilized on a temporary basis. And why would we want to permit it on a temporary basis? Well, we believe that not allowing this use currently increases the trips on our transportation network, which increases the number of truck trips and trailers hooked to those trucks, which increases greenhouse gas emissions and simply decrease, decreases the efficiency of grading and constructing on the site. With these considerations, the Spark City Council directed staff to amend Title 20 and provide a recommendation on allowing temporary outdoor processing in the city of Sparks. So staff set off on a process to receive input from the industry and receive input from our citizens. The video segment that I mentioned earlier that we reviewed on Tuesday depicted the nature of the use. We sent this video out to the public to solicit feedback as to whether this was a reasonable amendment and if so, what standards should be applied to such a temporary use. The video was reviewed by over 3,000 residents through Facebook, Nextdoor, and Instagram. Input was received and that has been included in your packet as Exhibit D. Staff additionally conducted two industry outreach meetings with, with industry representatives. Well, meeting one was very robust. The industry identified why this was a necessary component to the municipal code, what they desired, and even suggested mitigation techniques that staff could consider as we began to draft this code amendment. Meeting two was an opportunity for the development, or the industry, development industry to review the proposal and provide feedback, to which they did. Now, through this staff, staff developed standard which you have in Exhibit A and Exhibit B. Going to move to slide two and I'm gonna try to share my screen again. Does that, Chair Pritzos, have a proposed amendment?
Yep.
Very good. So the proposed amendment is now visible on your screen and we want to make sure that, I want to make sure you're, to bring your attention to B3, the bottom of that slide. And it says, temporary outdoor processing operations may only be permitted upon obtaining a temporary use permit, allowing temporary outdoor processing. So we would potentially allow temporary outdoor processing, which would include rock crushing, to be conducted on a site when, if you attain, if you obtain a temporary use permit. The next component of the amendment, Exhibit, Exhibit B in your packet has numerous standards associated with the possibility of conducting outdoor processing at a site. One component that we were very, very concerned with is that it was in association with a project of record. For example, a conditional use permit approved for us, for a site. Maybe it's a conditionally used, or excuse me, maybe it's a tentative map that's associated with the site, but something, a grading permit, a building permit that is associated with a potential project that would allow for outdoor processing. We want to ensure that the use is temporary and supportive of an approved project and does not become something that is a permanent nature and is supporting other projects in the region, not necessarily the project of record. Now, the next component that I want to bring your attention to is, is the key change that we discussed earlier. Now, as I discussed, temporarily, currently the Sparks Municipal Code does not allow for outdoor processing if it is on land that is zoned residential. We are proposing to allow the temporary outdoor processing on land that is zoned residential as long as it is not within 500 feet of what comes down to an occupied home. Now, if a developer is constructing new residential and they are building homes, but no one is living in them, they would be able to continue to do the outdoor processing as long as that house remains unoccupied or as long as that home remains unoccupied in a certificate of occupancy or final inspection has not been issued. Now, why did we pick 500 feet and not 1,000 feet, for example? Well, in Exhibit D of your packet, we included a, a study, a noise study that was done by Q and D and it reflects that at 500 feet, decibels are reduced to 56, 56 decibels at 500 feet. Chair Pritzos, is that slide showing on your screen?
Yep.
So we believe that 500 feet will be sufficient to, to operate a, a outdoor processing operation and only have a decibel level of 56. Now, the next slide that I want to show reflects what a 56 decibel would, would, would be equivalent to. And essentially, that is rain. You can see on this, the 50, between 50 and 60 is rain and conversation. So again, we believe the 500 feet will be sufficient to ensure that compatibility is maintained for residences that would be in proximity to a, a rock crusher or an outdoor processing facility. Now, some other components that we were concerned with, and our concern came from input from the citizens, our historical knowledge and, and a, a planning profession, and also from the, from the industry representatives. What, we wanted to ensure that compatibility, that's something the Planning Commission is always concerned with. Now, we, we have put conditions or standards, we have proposed standards regarding hours of operation, hours of maintenance, the days of week that the facility could be used. We've also identified standards for what would need to be submitted when an application would come in for a temporary use permit, site plans, circulation plans, demonstration of air quality permits. And lastly, to ensure that these uses are indeed temporary, we requested, or we are proposing to the Planning Commission that the size and the amount the unit can process are limited. The size would have to be portable, have to be able to be put on a trailer and can't be put, that comes down to not being able to put it on a foundation and make it more permanent. Again, ensuring the temporary units could be permitted and only remain temporary. So Chair Pritzos, in my presentation, I've outlined why this amendment is considered necessary by many, described the process staff used to process the amendment. And, and third, I've outlined the context to what the standards were created for the Planning Commission. Now, in this respective item, it is a, ultimately will become an ordinance and will be considered by the City Council. And so the Planning Commission is acting in an advisory capacity when they make a recommendation on this item. Staff also included an outlined motion and Chair Pritzos, that concludes my presentation and I'm available for any questions.
Alright, thank you very much, Jim. Are there any questions for staff at this time? Commissioner Carey.
Mr. Chairman, Jim, are there any public noticing requirements for temporary use permits? And it's my understanding we have in our, for construction sites, there's, there's requirement to have some sort of a, like a notification, a sign that talks about who the project contact is, contact. Would there be something similar along those lines for this proposed use?
The answer is there is no requirement for public noticing of the code amendment, similar to a conditional use permit. The Planning Commission will consider a conditional use permit later tonight on its agenda. That is required to be noticed. A code amendment is not required to be noticed by the state statutes or our municipal code. But Chair Carey, you also, I, excuse me, Commissioner Carey, you also identified, I guess you used to be a chair at one point. So, sorry, Chair Pritzos. Didn't mean to demote you. Commissioner Carey, the question on notification or the project contact, I, I did skip over that- I, I did skip over that component, but we did, uh, propose the planning commission consider requiring the temporary use to have a. A very, very easy to see sign that would identify that it is an approved temporary use. And a project contact that is available on a 24 hour, a day, seven day a week basis. So if there are issues that are occurring at the site. You, the, the public would be able to call, uh, a representative of the, of the facility and say, hey, there is a substantial amount of dust. Or, uh, the, the, uh, something is broken and everything has gone awry. Uh, there is a requirement in the temporary use that the, uh, the developer or the person utilizing that temporary use permit would have to provide. To the public on the site that it's being used.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Carey. Uh, Commissioner Kramer.
Um, Jim, is this, would the temporary use permit also have the hours of operation that this particular use would be enforced? Or in, in effect, so 7:00 AM, 7:00 PM, six, you know, during the normal construction hours? I mean, is that something that's going to be on there? I mean, I know that, that during construction hours, there's neighborhoods that are currently under construction that. You know, neighbors are going to be complaining that there's a noise level, there's kids at homes and currently with the current work situation. And with construction going on, there's several people that are working from home, they have children at home. You know, is that something that's going to be on that temporary use permit? Is that something that's going to be required at that time? That they post the hours of operation of that particular rock crushing operation?
The, the answer would be no. The answer is that, that in the proposal, um, Exhibit B in your packet, it does identify that. That could, the developer shall limit the construction hours of 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And, uh, nine to five on Saturday. Now, why did we not necessarily limit it further? Well, uh, those are currently in line with what construction hours are for all sites in the city of Sparks. And so, uh, those hours are not necessarily posted currently. But, uh, it is currently the ordinance in Sparks, seven to seven, uh, Monday through Friday, nine to five on Saturday. So we did not require that that would have to be posted. That would be something the developer would have to comply with. The temporary use permit would give us, uh, these essentially the standards that are identified in Exhibit B. Would be the requirements of the developer. And if there's an issue, we would enforce it. We also have the ability to add additional conditions if we see fit on that temporary use permit. But at this point, the proposal Commissioner Kramer would not be that they have to, uh, depict the, uh, approved hours. Because those are in line with the hours, uh, of the whole project.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Kramer. Any other questions for staff at this time? Okay, seen none. Uh, is the applicant, uh, here and do they have anything?
Commissioner, or excuse me, Chair Pritzos, the applicant, there is no applicant, this is sponsored by the city of Sparks.
Oh. All right, um, so then this is a public comment, uh, item. Uh, and so, uh, Adam Secretary, could you read the public comment announcement?
Okay, the telephone number for calling and participation is 1-669-900-6833 and the meeting ID is 918-6277-1011. You will press star nine to speak, or you can use the Zoom features. Um, and we did not receive any emails, public comment about this item, so we will now move to any callers that we have.
All right. Do we have any members of the public wish to speak at this time?
We do. We have Thomas Green requesting to speak.
All right.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I just wanted to say I live in Pioneer Meadows and, uh, I've seen that they have what appears to be a similar situation going on. Um, out in the vacant lot and Pioneer Meadows has been extremely responsive to, uh, my concerns when there's been dirt or rocks left on the roadway. So I think that, um, uh, I think that your, your amendment makes sense. And especially given that it reduces traffic on the Pyramid Highway, which is where they often go to get the rock. I especially like that you, uh, made sure that that, that, uh, restriction was in place so that they couldn't do rock crushing in Sparks and then deliver it to Arrow Creek per se. So, uh, I, I think it's a, I think it's a fair amendment and I think you guys looked into it well. And like I said, Pioneer Meadows has done a good job on, uh, or Lenar has done a good job at Pioneer Meadows. So, thank you.
Right. Thank you, sir. Uh, does anyone else, uh, wish to speak at this time?
We have Caroline Harkins next.
All right. I think you're muted, ma'am.
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, you said you did not receive any emails and that is not true. I sent one to Jim Rundell and he replied to it, acknowledged it. I think 500 feet is way too close to an existing residence. I'm, I'm saying thousand feet from any existing residence where people are actually living in the house. Because that's quite a bit of noise for quite a bit of time for a lot of people who are working from home. And or those workers that wo-work at night and have to sleep during the daytime.
All right. Thank you very much, ma'am. Um, do we have anyone else wishing to speak at this time?
We have Susan Merritt next.
All right.
Hi, um, I just had a question, uh, about, uh, the, uh, the times that would be involved. Uh, you said that the, uh, the times are designated on the paperwork that come with the use permit. But I noticed that the times designated were crossed out in your PowerPoint, uh, page. The, is, is it going to be an issue of, how do I ask this? Do you have to have that specified in the, uh, the code? Or is it, is it just that it's on the paperwork that they have to comply? My concern is, um, is compliance mandatory when it's not in the code?
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Um. Jim, would you wanna? Is there maybe like a real quick answer to that?
Typically, we, we finish the public comment portion, Chair Pritzos, and then you can ask me to answer the questions.
Fair enough. Uh, does anyone else wish to speak at this time on this item?
Yep, we have a phone, um, call from a phone number ending in 0190.
Okay, um, and caller, could you please state your name for the record?
Hi, this is Wayne Patterson. I, I just have a question about this. Are the materials you're talking about for these temporary crush sites? Are they going to be materials that are used on site or are they going to be trucked in? Through the neighborhoods and all that, or is it just going to be confined to the site where all this, where this temporary crusher is?
All right. Thank you, sir. Uh, anyone else who wishes to speak on this item?
I have no additional requests to speak.
All right, uh, then with that, I will.
I, I apologize Chair Pritzos, we now have Chris Barrett requesting to speak.
No worries, go ahead.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your time on this and the other commissioners. Hey, we came together, the industry came together with the city of Sparks to work out. Some solutions to some of the noises in the construction industry, the transportation on your city streets. And working with, uh, your, your staff, uh, Jim Rundell, it's just been, he's been awesome to work with. He understands our issues, the industry understands his issues. We don't want phone calls going into, to your offices, to your, um, your mailboxes, to the city council, to the mayor. We want to run our jobs, we want to do it efficiently and, and get out and come back the next day and do our job. This or, this change in the ordinance right now accomplishes so many concerns that the public has out there. All this work is on site. We do not want to work next to someone who is living in their home. And Jim came up with a great idea of, you can't work within a house, within 500 feet of a house that has a C of O. So the house may be built, but no one's living there. It's not causing any issues, it's not causing any noise problems, it's not causing any dust issues. It's good for the neighborhood and thi-and this is mainly for big projects that are not in the middle of the, an existing community to cause problems. Again, we don't want those issues. We want to get the job done and get out of there. The times of construction, we recognize that. Jim did a great job of, of putting that in the ordinance and there's not going to be any maintenance, there's not going to be any lights, uh, after hours. So, um, w-we support this ordinance, we hope you guys will. This is a 19 plus year old ordinance that has never been adjusted. And it's mainly going to affect those large developments out there in Spanish Springs area. That are so far away from residents. That will keep everything on site rather than disturbing the neighborhoods and the peace and the charm of everyone coming home. And relaxing on, in, on, uh, during the evening or the weekend. So we support this, we hope you support it. And if there's any question you have, we're ready to answer them for you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right, uh, does anyone, do we have any other members of the public who wish to speak on this item?
I have, um, Nevada Patriot requesting to speak.
Okay, uh, could you please state your name for the record, sir?
Uh, my name is Bruce Parks. I was, uh, just wondering if the Washoe County Planning Commission has approved, uh, this item.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do we have any other speakers on this item?
We have no additional requests to speak.
Okay, so with that, then I will close public comment on this item and see, do any of the commissioners have any, uh, additional questions for staff? Uh, so I, I have a real quick question then. So, uh, one of the callers was asking about, uh, the hours of operation. So is that going to be in? Are the hours of operation part of the code or, or we just sort of, uh, tying them to the standards used for construction?
Uh, thank you Chair Pritzos, and I, I would like to answer that question and circle back to, uh, Commissioner Kramer's question prior, or, or comment prior to public comment. And, uh, I'll share my screen and this is in Exhibit. B of your. Of your packet, uh, did that come up on your screen Chair Pritzos?
Yes.
I've highlighted a condition or standard for, and, uh. It, I'll just read it, temporary outdoor processing is limited to weekdays of Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM or sunset, whichever comes first. And the reason I wanted to circle back to that, uh, Commissioner, uh, Pritzos and Commissioner Kramer was. I said that it follows typical construction hours for the site, which is true, except that it is limited to Monday through Friday and not permitted on Saturdays. Which construction hours do currently permit construction, uh, on Saturdays from nine to five. Additionally, uh, we, we identified that in the wintertime, there may be a desire to conduct this use. Let's say it's late December, the sun is setting early and it is five o'clock and it is dark. We didn't necessarily want generators, uh, running artificial lighting for the site. So we limited it to 7:00 PM or sunset, whichever comes first. So that in the wintertime, late, late, uh, December, January, as the days are very short. They would not necessarily be able to operate artificial lighting to continue to utilize the temporary outdoor facility. And, and that should, that does, um, give you additional information, Commissioner Kramer, from your question earlier. So it is limited to just Monday through Friday. And Chair Pritzos, I think that answers your question. I can also attempt to answer some of the questions in the public comment if you would like.
Uh, yeah, that would, that'd be great.
Okay, so one of the questions was, um, hours of operation. I think we've just answered that question. And that, an additional component was a, uh, identification that, uh, the public provided me email. And maybe it was said you didn't receive any emails. I think Commissioner Chair Pritzos, you were comparing it to the way you received emails and, uh, agenda items later for today. However, you did receive the emails from staff, they are included in your packet as Exhibit D. Uh, so they were included, uh, the comments that we received. So, uh, the public identifying you should have received them, I believe it is in your packet, uh, for the, for the planning commission. A, another, another, uh, public comment was, uh. Is the, is the material being trucked in? Uh, we, I did speak to the process of the application earlier in my presentation. Identifying staff would require a circulation plan. This circulation plan would require the developer to identify where the trucks would be moving to and from. When conducting the, uh, say a rock crusher. Additionally, uh, can, uh, standard two does not allow the, um, temporary outdoor processing to occur more than one mile from the approved site. And that is to ensure that it is with the project of record. Now, if there is a component that if one mile needs to be exceeded, they can apply for an additional temporary use permit. But staff is going to really need, um, uh, some explanation as to why that will promote. The reduction of trips on the road and it will promote, uh, a reduce, uh, truck, tr-truck trips on our transportation network. Uh, potentially it's on a very big site, the rock crusher is one and a half miles, uh, from where, where it can be. And there's no houses that it inhibits, but we did provide that, uh, flexibility in the case that it exceeds one mile. Uh, that doesn't mean we would be looking to approve it for six miles from the site. Uh, but it does provide that little bit of flexibility. So I do believe that staff has, uh, proposed a standard that ensures that it is with the project of record. And it is not, uh, being utilized all over, say, North Sparks. Another component was, uh, did the Washoe Planning Commission approve the item? The Washoe Planning Commission does not have jurisdiction in terms of, uh, planning and zoning authority in the city of Sparks. Uh, the Washoe Planning Commission is restricted to the unincorporated areas of Washoe County excluding city of Reno. Of course, and, um, excluding the unincorporated areas governed by the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency. Other than that, the Washoe County Planning Commission has jurisdictions outside of those areas. This ordinance would only apply to the incorporated areas of the city of Sparks or areas that are identified in our sphere of influence. Uh, the, and I think, uh. Oh, there was one more comment, uh, Chair Pritzos, on the hours of operation being struck on Exhibit A. That is true, those hours of operation were struck, but that was on permanent, uh, outdoor processing, not temporary outdoor processing. And, uh, Exhibit B depicts that, uh, the temporary outdoor processing is limited. Again, as we spoke to earlier, Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM or sunset. Would not be permitted on the weekends and that would not be permitted after 7:00 PM. You know, let's say on June 21st, one of the longest days of the year. So those are governed, uh, the hours of operation are governed, even though it looks struck on Exhibit A, that was for permanent, uh, outdoor processing. Permanent outdoor processing is permitted in the industrial area by conditional use permit. It would be reviewed by the Sparks Planning Commission and the planning commission would have the opportunity at that point to govern the operation hours. Which they see fit in the industrial area.
All right. Thank you very much for that explanation, Jim. I hope that cleared up stuff for the members of the public. Do any other commissioners have questions at this time? All right, see no other questions, is there any discussion? All right, then, oh, Commissioner Carey.
Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll take a stab at leading, uh, off discussion here. You know, I, I think this, uh, code amendment makes a lot of sense. I think the proposed changes allow the flexibility that. I think the proposed changes allow the flexibility that, that the construction industry, industry is requesting and it mitigates.
Homes.
Oh, no.
Um, I'm certainly not in favor of, of allowing rock crushing facilities in established neighborhoods, but I think in the instances listed in the staff report that these would apply to developing areas um in the city, it makes sense to allow these on site and it would help reduce the impacts on the city's road network. Um, I think um it also helped for a lot of other reasons and I, I, I think that's a good thing.
All right, thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Commissioner Carey. Uh, is there any other discussion? All right, see none. I'm looking for a motion. Commissioner Carey.
Mr. Chairman, I will try to find the motion here. I move to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council of the amendments to Section 20 dot zero three dot zero three zero, outdoor processing and 20 dot zero three dot zero four zero, temporary uses of the Sparks Municipal Code to allow temporary outdoor processing on or near residentially zoned land when associated with approved projects and subject to the use standards as associated with CA dash two dash 21.
All right, uh, can I get a second?
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chair.
All right. So we have a motion by Commissioner Carey and a second by Commissioner Kramer. Any final discussion? All right, see none. Uh, Madam Secretary, may we please have a vote? Uh, I think you're muted there.
Commissioner Pritzos?
I.
Commissioner West?
I.
Commissioner Andriola?
I.
Commissioner Carey?
Hi.
Commissioner Kramer?
I.
Commissioner Rossin?
I.
Commissioner Reed?
I.
All right. Motion passes unanimously. So we will now move on to uh the old item six, which is now item seven, uh PCN two one dash zero 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 two.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, if you could give me a thumbs up that you're seeing my main title slide, thank you. Uh, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Before we get started with this item.
Yes.
I have, I have a disclosure to make.
Okay.
Um, the um uh, the representative for Pioneer Meadows contacted me on Tuesday after the study session to give me a brief rundown of the project. And I let the um client know, the representative know that if I had any questions whatsoever on this project, that I would let him know. And I would ask any questions whatsoever on the project at the, at this meeting. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, go ahead, Jonathan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners.
Yes.
Um, yes, I, I have a disclosure as well.
All right, go ahead.
I need to disclose that I was contacted by the developers consultant to clarify a question that I had regarding the ownership of the undeveloped parcels in the QC zoned area in question. I raised that during the study session and he called us to clarify.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner West. Um, I guess before we move on, anyone else wish to make any? Okay, I've not seen that either, so go ahead, Jonathan.
Right. Here. All right. So thank you, Mr. Chair, planning commissioners. Uh, for the record, Jonathan Cummins uh from the planning division, um, here to present PCN twenty one dash zero 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 two, which is a request to amend the Pioneer Meadows Plan Development Handbook. Uh, more specifically, the request is to add self-storage as a permitted use in the GC or general commercial land use area within the Pioneer Meadows. So the 640 acre Pioneer Meadows Plan Development is outlined in blue in the exhibit here. Uh, the 30 acre GC general commercial land use area is outlined in red at the southeastern corner. Uh, that's the intersection of Wingfield Hills Road and Vista Boulevard as it starts to go eastward toward Golden Eagle. Um, and just for a little bit more context, uh, to the west of the site is Cady Ranch North Plan Development. To the north is the Stone Brook Plan Development. And to the east of the site is the Wingfield Springs Plan Development. Uh, so a little bit of background on Pioneer Meadows overall, uh, the original handbook was adopted uh in 2000. It's since been adopted, uh, excuse me, amended four times. Um, and generally speaking, those amendments uh take place in order to sort of fine tune uh the document in order to sort of meet the, the ongoing development needs of uh builders out there. Um, and that's essentially what we're here doing this evening as well. So to zoom in a little bit, um, obviously the area outlined in red is the general commercial uh land use area in Pioneer Meadows. Uh, for a little bit more context, I'm going to wave my cursor over the Rayleigh Shopping Center here. Uh, this is, excuse me, the building itself. This is the Rayleigh's with several uh smaller retail tenants, um, which is a pretty dominant part of the landscape there, if you're familiar with uh the intersection of Vista Boulevard and Wingfield Hills Road. And so the, the, the red area, uh, again, is, is the GC uh land use area. It's 30 acres total. It spans over 11 parcels, um, excuse me, across 11 parcels. Uh, four of those um have remained undeveloped um since the inception of the project um and are currently undeveloped today. Um, those total just over 12 acres approximately. Uh, and so essentially, um, just by that simple math, just about one third of the commercial, uh, general commercial properties uh in the Pioneer Meadows are, are currently undeveloped. So to give a little bit of background on proposed change to the handbook, uh, the applicant is proposing to add one new use to the list of permitted uses in the general commercial area only. Uh, so to give you a sense of what is currently allowed there, um, here's a list from the handbook um of approved uses in the general commercial land use area. This is the list as it appears in the handbook. So this is the order in which uh these uses are listed there. Um, so there are retail stores, personal services, comparison goods, wholesale stores, business park, recreational facility, fitness center and sales office, as well as public facilities, clinics and medical offices, general office, which includes banks, uh, restaurants, childcare facilities, assisted living facilities and convenience stores. Again, these are all uses that are currently permitted by right in the general commercial area of Pioneer Meadows. Um, some additional uses that are allowed through a conditional use permit in that uh land use area include entertainment centers, bars, churches, drive-throughs, outdoor sales, gas and service stations, as well as outdoor storage accessory to retail sales. Uh, so as staff pointed out in the staff report for this item, uh, the proposed self-storage use would ultimately be uh less intense than those uses that are currently allowed in the GC uh area in terms of traffic generated uh and in terms of the light and noise created by the general operation of that particular kind of business. Um, so as you can see, there's a good mix of uses there that are currently allowed there. Um, but again, to the point about the longstanding vacancy of those parcels uh in the general commercial area, um, and also to address the question that the commission asked at study session about um why this wasn't um, you know, anticipated at the original handbook. Um, the original list um didn't anticipate it uh that there was eventually going to be obviously some slow but somewhat steady decline in, in brick and mortar retail, uh, nor could it anticipate uh sort of the growing demand over time for well-designed and um the sort of compatible storage use facilities, there are storage facility users that um are essentially um what we're kind of, you know, contemplating with this amendment today. And so again, to that question, um, we now know also that self-storage is um, is, is more often than not developed in a way that's uh bears a pretty strong resemblance to general retail uh in terms of design. Um, and so we'll get to that design component in a moment, but um we wanted to make that clarification that um staff does see the request as appropriate, given that the current conditions uh that exist there uh to the particular location, the vacancy of those parcels, um, as well as the market trends that have sort of affected uh these, the need for this kind of a change um all these years later. Um, so back to the lists, um, a few of these uses are relatively intense, such as uh restaurants, retail grocery stores, convenience stores, um, as well as um drive-throughs, gas stations, bars. Uh, these are, these are uses that, that create a good amount of traffic, sometimes a good amount of noise, things like that at, at different kinds of hours. And so um essentially we want to come back to that point that we, um, we believe that we agree with the applicant on the idea that we're proposing to add a use that is less intense than those things that currently exist there in terms of allowed uses. So in proposing to add self-storage to the permitted uses, uh, the applicant is requesting to add language specific to the use in order to guide the future development um of, of the site, uh, but also to mitigate potential impacts. Um, so a few bullet points here, just to kind of highlight uh what that proposed new language kind of captures. Um, it reiterates a, a bit about um what is required of all general commercial in Pioneer Meadows, which is that the architecture has to meet uh handbook design criteria, uh, and not just architecture, but also the site design um itself overall, the, the circulation and all kinds of different components of, of the design of the site itself. Um, additionally, uh, the design would have to be approved by the design review committee, which is a board, essentially uh an extension of the HOA kind of network of Pioneer Meadows. They would have to approve uh the site design and the architecture layout before staff would be able to um consider a request to actually build one of these facilities. So specific to self, uh, self-storage users, um, much like the standard that we have um in the municipal code, there's, there's also going to be restrictions um on what can and can't be done by customers in terms of the use itself. Um, well, let me wrap up with, with the design criteria part here because they're, they're proposing things that are going to help us kind of understand that, that if, if a request were to come through for this kind of a project, that some standards are going to be in place in order to help um guide the design and approval of that, if that uh were to happen. Um, so the facility would have to be screened with walls and landscaping. I mean, that's a pretty significant part of the commercial requirement um as far as the design criteria in the handbook. Um, and at the administrative review stage, which I'll get to in a minute, um, essentially uh that these are things that, that are looked at pretty closely by staff in terms of uh whether or not there's going to be a dense enough tree coverage, um, high enough walls, things like that around the site in order to mitigate the sort of visual impacts of establishing a self-storage uh facility in any neighborhood. Another, one of the design criteria would be that adequate parking and circulation for public and emergency access uh be established and be adequate. Um, as you can imagine, uh, circulation and parking are sometimes uh concerns with the development of a self-storage facility. Uh, so by adding criteria into the language, uh, they're essentially um helping us to sort of mitigate uh what those kinds of um access issues could be. Um, one of them, for instance, would be, obviously there's going to be a need for a general sort of use by customers, but also that fair trucks can access the site. And then also, of course, that uh customers driving, uh, moving trucks can access the site adequately. So those are things that we've kind of called out in the design criteria that they proposed for today. And finally, any portion of the site that would be used for RV or vehicle storage would be limited and concealed. Um, and as you, as you know, from past cases uh that have been before you, uh, RV and vehicle storage is, is a, is a common um accessory use to a self-storage facility. And so in that, uh, with that knowledge, we kind of went into this knowing that needed to have some standards that would help sort of foresee what those kinds of impacts could be related. Excuse me. So to amend a plan development handbook requires that the following findings be made. I put these up in just a few slides, uh, but we do, uh, for the record, have to read and sort of discuss each of these findings. Um, so I will, with me, we're going to go through each one of these. Uh, but again, I think I paired them up so that they're, you know, relatively straightforward. Uh, finding A asks that you evaluate whether the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. By adding a permitted non-residential use to a growing residential area of the city, the request does support goal MG1, which looks for economic vitality as well as MG2 to foster diversity in the land use mix. Finding B asks that you evaluate whether the request is consistent with surrounding land uses. Uh, the only sites available for this um particular use in Pioneer Meadows are adjacent to a grocery store, uh, which is also surrounded by various office, restaurant, gas station and minor retail users. Um, so with the proposed standards in place, uh, mini storage use would create less impact than would be expected with um other permitted GC uses uh that we've covered already. And so the proposed standards, again, are going to help to ensure that use not adversely impacts surrounding property owners. Finding C asks that you evaluate whether the amendment is fiscally positive to the city. So the applicant provided a full fiscal impact analysis, which did conclude that uh this particular amendment would be fiscally positive to the city. Uh, and so to, to just to go into just a little bit, um, just for the record here, the primary assumptions of, of that study is that self-storage, um, and this is a standard practice in, in the fiscal analysis side of things, uh, that self-storage is categorized as an industrial type of a use for the purposes of that kind of review. And that's based on uh the nature of the building type and the expectations on the uses that will be conducted on the site. Um, and for our, for our purposes here, in this case, it's going to be, you know, talking about uh mini storage units that are generally left alone and not accessed very often. And so the level of service provided is very low. Um, so the particular kind of development would be lower cost to the city uh to provide the services as compared with general retail, the restaurant users, gas stations, which you can imagine generate a significantly higher demand on services throughout the year. Um, so to expand just a little bit more and wrap up on this one, um, uh, because the, the course of the, the, the report was including the packet and posted website and discussing this back before, so I can try to, you know, summarize the pieces of it that are, you know, crucial for us to have out here for discussion. Um, various commercial uses that they um, that are currently allowed there. Uh, one of the findings that we, we highlighted in the staff report was that some of those uses could actually be fiscally negative to the city based on the levels of services required. Um, and so this particular use um is, is going to be fiscally positive because uh generally the, the, the level of service and the cost of that service to the city is, is very low based on that sort of the overall sort of scope of the use. So that was trying to just, the point of our moment deal, so. Uh, moving on, so finding D asks that you evaluate whether the request furthers the mutual interest of owners and preserves the plan's integrity. Uh, so the change will only allow the proposed new use in remaining GC land use area and it will not increase the size or ultimately shape or location or parcels that are designated GC. Uh, the proposed changes will not affect the integrity of the plan as originally approved based on that. Finding E asks that you evaluate whether the request will impair the reliance of the provisions of the plan. Self-storage is a use that is not uncommon to commercial land use areas uh throughout the city and elsewhere. And I've stated this a couple of times now, that's why I apologize, but the use will likely generate less traffic, less noise, less impact overall than uses that are already permitted in the GC area. Um, therefore, the change is not expected to impair the reliance of property owners on the handbook. And finding F asks that you evaluate whether the request will adversely affect the public interest. Uh, the request is intended to facilitate development of parcels that have remained vacant and undeveloped. Uh, as such, the request i- is in a manner consistent with the goals and policies of the Sparks Comprehensive Plan and therefore uh not found to be detrimental to the public interest. Uh, so last group of three here, uh, and I'll wrap up. Um, finding G asks that you evaluate whether the request is consistent with development and preservation of the entire plan. Um, as you're aware, for the past decade or so, uh, maybe even decade and a half, general retail uh has, has been increasingly challenged. Um, and we, we point out in our staff report that that's due likely to online shopping and other factors, but based on the history of these um long vacant parcels, uh, the uses that were anticipated at the time of the original handbook um have not been conducive to development of these sites ultimately. And that's the reality that we're facing now, and that's essentially why we're here. Um, so adding self-storage as a permitted use um gives an option to the, to the owners, to the developers uh of these remaining commercial sites, um, decreasing the likelihood that the parcels remain undeveloped indefinitely. Um, and so uh additionally, frankly, we, we have a route here to provide a service uh to these, to the residents of this part of the city that currently doesn't exist or nearby. Uh, finding H asks that you evaluate whether the request affects the enjoyment of adjacent lands. Uh, no changes to the land use pattern or street network are proposed. Uh, the request is anticipated to have minimal impacts on residents and property owners and their ability to utilize lands adjacent to Pioneer Meadows. Um, so while these properties were, you know, they're currently vacant and undeveloped, they were established as part of uh the community of, uh, excuse me, the, the communities framework of, of road networks and pedestrian networks, uh, and none of that will be changed. And I requires that the amendment not be granted solely to confer private benefit to any person. Uh, the proposed amendment would allow any property owner to pursue development of a self-storage facility in the GC land use area of Pioneer Meadows. So the amendment will not solely confer private benefit to any individual person. And finally, finding J requires uh that we uh disclose our public notice. Uh, to amend a plan development handbook, all property owners within that plan development have to be noticed uh directly. And so through uh additionally, 750 feet outside the plan development has to be noticed as well. So um through some pretty hard work on the part of our administrative staff here, the city was able to notify 1,265 property owners. Uh, they received that notice um after it was mailed on April 22nd. Uh, that notice was also published in the Reno Gazette-Turnel uh the day before that, April 21st. And as of noon today, this, the city staff in the planning department has received 23 uh emails uh with commentary, which we have provided uh to uh planning commission on the website. So that's been included in your updated materials as of today. Um, the applicant and the representative are uh on the call with us this evening. I believe that the representative would even like to make a presentation to you this evening. Um, and with that, staff does recommend approval of the item and I will be happy to take your questions.
Okay. Thank you very much, Jonathan. Uh, do any members of the commission have questions? Uh, Commissioner Reed?
I thank you, uh, Chair Pritzos. Um, I read um those comments that were sent to email by the um nearby residents and many expressed concerns with noise, increased traffic, 24 increased traffic, 24 hour lighting, possible crime. And that may devalue the price of their homes. Is there any evidence to substantiate these claims? And can you address some of their concerns?
I, I have no evidence to substantiate any of those concerns. The, the one concern that, that I can pick out of that, that I, that I know is something we're, you know, contemplating addressing when we do get to the point of, you know, doing an administrative review of a, of a specific actual project proposal would be the hours of operation component, which would obviously serve to mitigate, you know, the, the, the more problematic noise or lack that might be generated on the site. And I believe the applicants can speak to what they're actually thinking about proposing on, on that front. And that would essentially again be something that we would be able to condition at the time of the entitlement for a specific project. And as to not only the hours of operation, but the level of buffer between, you know, other uses and this particular site in order to, you know, make sure that any of those potential concerns, whether they, you know, become reality or not, that they be sort of addressed in conditions as we develop the site.
Thank you, Jonathan.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Reed. Commissioner Carey. You're muted.
Your chair. Two quick technical questions before we open this up. I received an email from Mr. Dan O'Day earlier today talking about that this would have to, this proposed amendment would have to be go through the Pioneer Meadows Design Review Committee prior to approval. I was wondering if you could address that? And I had another technical question.
Absolutely. The handbook does not state that an amendment to the handbook be approved by the DRC. It does require that any applicant hold a neighborhood meeting, which was accomplished this week.
Thank you for that. My second question is, is so it's, it's proposed, this proposed amendment to the handbook would allow for self storage through an administrative review request, review process. Is there a public notification process associated with administrative review?
No, there's not.
And why, why, why does staff feel that that administrative review process would be able to mitigate the impacts associated with this proposed use as opposed to something that requires a public notification, like a conditional use permit?
So in the case where a self storage facility required a conditional use permit, we would be coming to the planning commission to essentially establish those development criteria and those standards, those conditions of approval that are actually present in the language that they propose to us as the development standard that will be required for a self store facility here. So we agreed with them that it would be appropriate if we had adopted those standards into the handbook that then through administrative review, the mitigations that would be accomplished through a conditional use permit could actually be accomplished at the staff level with those standards in fact.
Jonathan, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Carey. Any other questions for staff at this time?
Chair, I have a question, please.
Yes, Commissioner Andrew.
The, the language in the development standards handbook speaks to the possibility, if you will, of having a caretaker on the site that may or may not, you know, be in place. I'm wondering if your point in speaking specifically to the hours would apply to that resident as well.
So in the case that, that the applicant proposed that they have a manager's quarters on site. Obviously, the hours of operation are going to apply to when customers are able to access the site. The manager essentially would be a resident of the facility and the language that they borrowed or that they, you know, proposed here in this, in this change is, is equivalent to what we actually do call out in the zoning code for self storage uses, which is that we limit the maximum number. So we say that you can have a manager's quarters, but we don't regulate it beyond that. So they could have one and they may choose not to have one.
I have a follow up question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Based on that same subject of the caretaker resident that's outlined. Does the, I know it's a little early, but I am curious that there is a potential location on the property of where that caretaker property or the resident would be located.
Yeah, I can't speak to what's specifically being contemplated with their proposal for a site. That's not, not on the, that's not the agenda item this evening. So I couldn't speak to that.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chair. I'm wondering if the applicant, when it's appropriate, would be able to answer that question. Thank you.
Yeah, we can certainly ask. So are there any other questions for staff? All right. So seeing none, Jonathan mentioned the applicant would like to make a presentation. So I guess we will do that at this time.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. For the record, Andy Dilling with Wood Rogers. With me tonight is Dave Mossman and Tom Nguyen, who are the owners and operators of, of the Pioneer Marketplace. We've got a brief presentation. I'll start off and then Tom and Dave would like to close out with just a few comments on kind of the history of the, of the site and, and what they've been dealing with on an operations basis. So I'm just going to share my screen here for a PowerPoint presentation. Let me know when you guys can see that. Got it?
Yep.
All right. So what we have tonight is, and, and some of this will be a little bit redundant, so I'll breeze through as Jonathan gave a great overview. It's an amendment to the Pioneer Meadows Handbook to allow self storage. It's a narrowly scoped amendment to the overall Pioneer Meadows Design Standards Handbook. It only allows self storage in the general commercial designation, which is obviously at the corner of Wingfield Hills and Vista. Just a, by a little bit of background, Pioneer Marketplace, as it's referred to, is the shopping center on both the east and west sides of Wingfield Hills. It began construction back in 2007. As you can see from the aerial photo here in the, in the, in the slide. The entire center was, was constructed all at once, if you will, or essentially all at once with the parking lots and utilities. And several finished pads left for future buildings. You can see that, you know, the large open areas, especially on this west side here, and then the couple pads on the east. After 15 years of operation, unfortunately, you know, due to a lack of demand, many of the spaces in the individual buildings as well as these pads have remained vacant. Pioneer Meadows, as Jonathan shared, was originally approved in 2000. So for over 20 years, you know, really the retail environment has changed significantly and brick and mortar retailers have downsized significantly. And, you know, really do, you know, in large part to the exponential growth of e-commerce. I'm sure all of us, you know, regularly have Amazon packages showing up on our, on our front doorstep. And, and for those retailers that have remained in a brick and mortar situation, you know, really they've opted for locations that have, you know, that are really grade A locations and have a ton of, of pass by traffic. Think, you know, Pyramid Highway and, and the shopping centers that are there and those retailers that are there. For this request, the design standards, we did limit it to 93,000 square feet. And that was derived from a conceptual site plan that I'm showing on the, on the screen. This is obviously just a concept at this time. And we tried to craft the design standards that could support something like this. But before you tonight, obviously is just, you know, just the amendment to the handbook. It's not the actual project. But just to give you kind of a flavor for, for what we're thinking, you know, 93,000 square feet, really we're looking up into the large pad areas that are in the, the northwest portion of the shopping center to the north of the Rayleigh's building. We have written in there that we would be required to maintain the same architectural standards as the rest of the shopping center. So these large buildings in effect would would look very similar in character to, to the Rayleigh's building as an example. We are required to minimize the lighting, especially adjacent to residential, which is consistent with the rest of the commercial buildings in there. We, originally in, in, in talking with the neighbors, as Jonathan shared, we had a neighborhood meeting on Tuesday night. We'd originally shared that, you know, typically storage units are, are open kind of at a 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. As we discussed it more as a team, the center itself right now is open. The Rayleigh's, for example, is operating between the hours of 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM. Just for consistency, we would propose that the hours would be the same. The purpose of that is, you know, there's already some onsite security during the, the closed hours. And so that would be consistent that, you know, they would be kind of patrolling the same area at the same time. The setbacks will be the same as a commercial center, which includes a one to one height to setback ratio adjacent to residential, which would be along this western property line here. And we are anticipating, you know, it would be limited to these western pads with additional retail and office being provided, which is, you know, kind of highlighted in the blue here. So this is not, you know, a complete you know, deviation from, from the commercial shopping center. There still would be the opportunity to introduce additional retail and some additional restaurants and office type uses. It's just, you know, the sheer acreage of, of the, the shopping center out there is just much, much too large for what, what we would anticipate of being viable in this day and age. I mean, quite frankly, if we were planning this in 2021, you know, I think the, the commercial area here would be probably half the size of what it is. Just to kind of, again, shed some, you know, a little bit more light, shine a little bit more light on, on what these future storage facilities look like. You know, this is not the storage, the mini storage of the 1980s, you know, the, the metal buildings and roll up doors. This will be a Class A indoor storage facility, which will be climate controlled. So again, the, the architecture of this, it is a, you know, a large building with indoor individual storage units. Not, not your kind of typical roll up doors. There'll be security cameras throughout. It'll be professionally managed with onsite management during the daytime hours or during the operating hours. Still debatable whether or not there would be an overnight caretaker, you know, the technology associated with this. You know, each of these units is individually alarmed and there's a keypad that controls the entry and exit. So you have to enter your unique key pin to enter the facility. If you don't and you open your alarm, your, your, your storage unit, then the alarm would sound. So it's, it's a very secured, it uses a lot of technology in lieu of the kind of 24 hour caretakers. That's, that's more of the modern storage facility at this time. We did conduct public outreach. We sent letters to all of the residents, all the property owners, I should say, within Pioneer Meadows as provided by city staff. We conducted the neighborhood meeting on Tuesday night. And just to kind of summarize some of the concerns we heard and and how they compare between, you know, what the existing shopping center has and what the storage facility would entail. So one of the things we heard is that, you know, storage facilities are unsightly. And effectively, you know, the shopping center has current guidelines that dictate, you know, the architectural standards and require design review committee approval. We wrote in that, you know, we must maintain those same standards. The exteriors will essentially, you know, look the same and complimentary to the existing buildings out there. And the DRC would still have to have approval over that architecture. So we, it's, it's consistent effectively. Hours of operation, as I stated, the shopping center is operating from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And just for consistency, we would look to, to maintain that. As I said, we did say 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. It was slightly different to the neighbors, but as we, we kind of talked about it more internally, we felt it was appropriate to remain consistent with the rest of the shopping center. Traffic, we heard traffic concerns. Just looking at kind of the comparison of, of a shopping center, 93,000 square feet of shopping center, you know, generates over 3,500 daily trips. That, that same 9,300 square, I'm sorry, 93,000 square feet of a storage facility only generates 140 daily trips. I mean, it is drastically different and drastically fewer trips that are generated by a storage facility. Security currently, you know, open access around the parking lots with security cameras around the existing buildings. This, the storage facility itself would be a closed access, as I mentioned, with those keypad access only limited to the hours of operation and security cameras throughout. And then there was lastly a question, kind of why do you need more storage? Right now, you know, the shopping center has a, a number of vacant pads and, and it's a really difficult commercial environment to attract those larger retail users with that movement to e-commerce. So there's, there's just very few users that could fill those pads in the future. And we feel like a storage facility is appropriate to, to backfill that, that acreage. And then looking, you know, we conducted a market study right now in the city of Sparks. There's 98% occupancy of the storage facilities throughout the city. So essentially it's, you know, at full occupancy. And you can see that, you know, in, in rapidly increasing rents on those existing facilities. Just real quick, you know, we did, Jonathan covered, we did conduct a fiscal analysis. EK Economics, who does them often for projects like this. It analyzed it kind of in two different scenarios, looking at just the status quo of what the commercial would look like. And then transitioning to the 93,000 square feet of storage. And it did conclude that it would be a positive fiscal impact. In fact, it would be better than the existing commercial. And that's due to that low cost of service, public services associated with this. With that, I will conclude my remarks and turn it over to Tom Nguyen and Dave Mossman to kind of give a little flavor on, on some of the background of this.
Hello. My name is Tom Nguyen and I've been the owner of this center and the, the one on the east side across the street for the last 15 years since their inception. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak before you. We began building both these centers about 15 years ago. It was the very early phases of the Pioneer Meadows development. And around the time we started is also the time when the iPhone was first introduced, 2007. I bring it up for two reasons. Number one, to recognize how much our lives have changed in the last 15 years. And two, to provide a little context for a 15 year period and what how quickly e-commerce has changed the landscape of retail. 50% of all e-commerce business is actually done on mobile phones. So it may seem a little odd that we're talking about Apple, planning commission meeting and going to talk about Amazon a little bit too. But the massive growth of these companies and others like them have been at the expense of centers like this. So it's, you know, at the time we started 15 years ago and the planning was done 20 years ago. I don't think anybody anticipated the changes that we'd be facing today. As Andy says, if we had, we, the centers would have been a lot smaller. We wouldn't have 30 acres out here. A few points about online sales. I'm sorry.
Sorry to interrupt. We have about four and a half minutes left on this applicant presentation.
Okay. A few points about online sales. Amazon was a big company and we started, they're 125 times larger today. Online sales increased 44% last year. They make up now 20% of retail sales and it, and it's growing. And a tremendous amount of stores are closing every year. So, you know, we don't really have a problem with this. Change happens, but we do need to adapt. And the self storage proposal before you is intended to go on those large pads that were the back of the center. Those were designed for big box stores like Circuit City, Sports Authority, Borders Books. They're out of business. My business partner, Dave Mossman, is going to speak to that in a second. And it's also important to note that we've, we've had these pads on the market listed for 15 years. We have never gotten a credible offer. We've never signed a lease in 15 years. And I know some people are, have been asking about whether this is going to eliminate restaurants and shops for the center in the neighborhood. And it's important to know that when you add up all the vacant space here after this self storage property is taken out of the equation, we would have 70,000 square feet of remaining retail property. That's probably enough for 30 restaurants and shops. Would, I bring it up as a point just for perspective, we would never be able to build that many. But there is plenty of retail space remaining. So, and I guess one, one final point. Health of a center is, is really based on traffic, energy and appearance. And storefronts that are vacant and perpetually vacant property is not good for the health of the center. You know, it's a nuisance, but more than that, the appearance just detracts from the rest of the center. So I respectfully ask for your support. Because we don't have many options at this point. But storage is in high demand. This is allowed in other properties similar in the city. It'll put this property to good use and help the vitality of the rest of the center. And even with the change, we will still have more than enough retail and restaurant space for the community's current and future needs. So thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity. Dave?
Thanks, Tom. And I'll move quickly. It looks like we have a little over a minute. And just for context, I've been involved in this center since its development 15 years ago. And we've been trying to bring services to the community during this time. As Andy and Tom mentioned, e-commerce has changed the leasing landscape. And I'll break that up into two aspects. Box leasing. Best case scenario, 10 to 15 years ago, this was a secondary site for boxes other, other than a grocery store. The primary location being on Pyramid Highway. 10 years ago, there were roughly 65 possible box tenants we could talk to. Today, there's 16 of those. Others have gone bankrupt. They're not looking to expand anymore. Consolidation has happened and we've experienced that ourselves. Others have gone bankrupt. They're not looking to expand anymore. Consolidation has happened, and we've experienced that ourselves. We signed the drugstore lease on the east side with Long's, and shortly after that, CVS bought Long's and has chosen only to open it for one day, and then they close, close the store. So as Tom said, at this site, we have twenty five thousand square feet of shops based on the west side, twenty one thousand on the east side. And today, we have twenty six thousand square feet of vacancy. When you add that to after, if this amendment was approved, we'd have fifty one thousand square feet of unbuilt space or a total of seventy five thousand square feet of of space that we could lease to uh future tenants, and we we hope we can find them. So we feel like we're leaving enough space to be filled or built to roughly double the tenants that are there today. So to summarize, even after this amendment, we believe we will have enough retail space to serve the community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh are there any questions uh at this time for the applicants? Commissioner Carey.
Mister Chairman, um thank you, Andy for the, and Tom and and Dave for for the information. I think that's, it's very helpful to kind of see that the type of project you're looking at. I'm just curious, with a typical class A self-storage space, how many employees typically work at that kind of a of a of a facility?
I'll probably defer to Tom, if you wouldn't mind, you know, it's probably a couple, if I had to guess, but.
Yeah, it's not, uh the self-storage facilities of the of the modern age do not have a lot of employees. They have a lot of technology. And, but we have, our plan is to, one of those shop buildings in the front, one of the blue buildings in the front, to do the uh office for the self-storage facility there. That would also potentially be a UPS type office and packing, moving supplies. And then we also uh are seriously considering doing executive office suites there, uh maybe a a dozen office suites, uh small offices for people to lease with uh conference facilities. And the employees there would then service those folks too. So that's uh, but not, the self-storage facilities do not have a lot of employees.
Call up, I may, Mister Chair.
Go for it.
Thank you. And Tom, it's it's safe to say it's 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 less than a typical retailer, kind of a service oriented business.
Yes.
Okay, th- thank you very much.
All right, uh Commissioner Reed.
Thank you, Chair Pritzos. Um I just have a question. Um do you you own other similar storage facilities?
No, we don't. Uh I'm, I've been in the real estate business for forty five years and own shopping centers, rental homes, office buildings. Um uh Dave is uh the same apartments, shopping centers. So we are, we are seriously looking at doing this, or we will, we will have professional management. But we may also venture it with a storage facility operator. So we're, we're looking at options right now, but can't do anything right now, actually.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions for the applicant or staff at this time? Okay, well, seen none. Uh this is a, oh, Commissioner West.
I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to do that.
Or is, um okay, so this is a public comment item, uh and so we will be opening public comment. I would like to reiterate uh from what I said at the beginning of the meeting, for those who may not have uh joined us yet. Uh we have received a very large volume of public comment um on this item uh and the next item as well. If you requested that the secretary read your email into the record, uh then that is going to count as your public comment. If you asked to speak live, uh then uh you will be prompted to do so after the emails have been read. If uh the secretary is not able to complete uh reading your entire email in the three-minute time, rest assured that the entirety of your email is part of the public record and uh has been uh sent and of and viewed by both myself and the other members of the commission. Uh so with that, Madam Secretary, could you please read the announcement?
Thank you, Chair Pritzos. Um on your screen, you'll see the meeting information for tonight along with the Zoom link. If you wish to join by phone, you'll dial the one six six nine nine hundred six eight three three. Meeting ID is nine one eight six two seven seven one zero one one. You will be given three minutes to speak. You will press star nine or raise your hand feature. Um as stated, we have received several emails regarding this project. Um we will begin the public comment by reading those into the record. Myself and Ms. Martinez will alternate the reading of those. Um and we will be setting a timer for each. The emails will be read in alphabetical order, and we will now begin with our first email, Ms. Martinez.
This email was received by Bijou Abraham. Dear Commissioners, I'm a home homeowner at Pioneer Meadows. My wife and I love, sorry. My wife and I love Sparks for several reasons and chose this as a potential place for my retirement. We are concerned about the newly proposed storage facility in Pioneer Meadows. This storage facility was not part of the development plan at the time we selected. Actively looking for a neighborhood where we can settle down. A storage facility in this area can cause increased crime, worsening drainage and the lack of emergency vehicle access. In addition, there will be traffic and people always moving in and out of the area in rental trucks and heavy vehicles. All of these cause high light, sound and dust pollution in this area. A storage facility also increases the chances of fire danger. A potential fire causes the challenge of how people will ingress and egress in the community. All of these will eventually bring down the value of the property in this area. As the housing market increases, the city has several avenues for bringing in revenue and storage facilities should not be one of them. It encourages a terrible habit of hoarding and buying things beyond the means. Instead, the shit city should be investing in more parks and schools, not promoting storage facilities at this point. As a property owner at Pioneer Meadows, I strongly oppose the proposal of having a storage facility in my community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, this next, this next email is from Rebecca Shane and Rebecca Curtis. In regards to the PCN twenty one zero 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 two amendment to the Pioneer Meadows Development Standards Handbook, we strongly oppose the amendment request to add self-storage to the list of permitted uses in the general commercial land use category for our community. We believe that there was a reason this type of business was excluded from the original planned development use category. We have been residents of this valley since nineteen ninety two and residents of the Wingfield Springs and Pioneer Meadows communities since two thousand and three. Over the years and as more and more residential neighborhoods continue to fill our valley, it is becoming ever more noticeable at the limited remaining space for commercial community needs. As we look forward to the future, we need to keep the long-term view at the forefront with this decision. As evidenced from the picture provided, this proposed change would affect a large portion of our undeveloped commercial space that is remaining for the Pioneer Meadows and Wingfield Springs residents, which is conveniently located off of our main travel artery Vista Boulevard, as well as within walking distance of an assisted living facility, large apartment complexes and residential communities. We believe the space use limitations should remain as is and left for future development for more community service needs such as restaurants, small retail businesses, medical dental vision offices, banking institutions and such. With no community transportation option, options in parentheses, bus service, it is even more important to allow room for community service needs that are within walking distance for our community, not for a large unsightly storage facility that could be placed somewhere elsewhere and would take up the small bit of remaining easy access commercial space for our large community. There is already an unsightly large brick walls and metal roof self-storage facility being built at the corner of Pyramid and Los Lo- La Pasada and Eagle Canyon. I am sure you will get an argument from the current landowner and prospective self-storage business owner that is property has been left undeveloped for a number of years. Please consider that this commercial development was just taking root right before the real estate market crash of two thousand and seven and was starting to rebuild before the pandemic hit last year. It will take time for businesses to recover, but with the large growth in housing, I have no doubt this commercial development will start to flourish again and start to grow with, into an amazing community center of commerce and services. Please seriously consider the long-term impacts a change like this would do to our community down the road and how we can build a better community by leaving room for essential services that a growing community will need in the future. Sincerely, Shane and Rebecca Curtis.
This next email was received from Rory and Lauren Bruling. In regards to case PCN twenty one dash zero 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 two amendment request for Pioneer Meadows Development Standards Handbook, we strongly oppose the amendment request to add self-storage to the list of permitted uses in the commercial, general commercial land use category for our community. We believe that there was a reason this type of business was excluded from the original planned development use category. Our family has been residents of Wingfield Springs and Pioneer Meadows since two thousand eighteen and have had the opportunity to grow our family here. In the short time that we've lived here, it's readily apparent that the needs for various businesses to have opportunity to expand and meet the needs of our growing city, notably healthcare. We are a dual healthcare family that has seen our healthcare system overrun and overworked before, during and likely after this pandemic. Reno is in desperate need for many services, including general practice and pediatric pediatric clinics and offices. We need to look at the long-term outcome of the decision to use this land for anything besides essential businesses. By taking up space for storage facilities, a plan initially decided against during zoning, our community will be limiting the safe and healthy growth for, growth potential for our community. As it stands now, it takes months of calling pediatrician office after office to find openings to see your children. Let our community stand with the initial intention of this land. Not all changes are for the better. Please seriously consider the long-term impacts of a change like, a change like this would do to our community down the road and how we can build a better community by leaving room for the essential services that are, are growing, a growing community will need in the future.
This next email is from Marissa Hammond. I oppose the proposed amendment to add self-storage to the list of permitted uses in the GC general commercial land use category. If the amendment is approved and the new self-storage is built adjacent to Rayleigh's, my house is across the fence from the proposed self-storage buildings. This will add noise, add twenty-four hour lighting, increase traffic, be an eyesore, be a magnet for crime and may devalue my home. The Rayleigh shopping area was built as a retail area serving the community. Self-storage does not fit that use. I understand there is a need for self-storage. There is plenty of commercial and industrial property available for self-storage. I bought a home in this community without self-storage as a neighbor. Please vote no on this request. Thank you, Marissa Hammond.
The next email was received from Katie Harris. Board members, I come before the board to voice my opposition to the requested change to the planned unit development for Pioneer Meadow Master. As a resident of this community since two thousand ten and member of the Pioneer Meadows Homeowners Association, I want to explain to the board why I oppose the matter and what factual basis I would ask the board to consider. The original planned development surrounded a village-style community with designated use for general commercial homes and a business park. An objective of the PUD was a one-stop-living approach and a reduction in traffic. The concept of live, shop and work, live, shop and work in the same area was embraced by the city. The common trails in the community all come together as the marketplace, a clear indication of the desire to maintain a common gathering area. Why would we change that? Pioneer Meadows established the rules in the PUD, and they have already reduced the initial planned general commercial. They also reduced the planned parks by one and a half acres and completely abandoned a ten-acre school site in favor of higher-density residential. In a PUD, the needs and desires of the homeowner, homeowners are paramount. The board is aware that the future growth of Sparks to the east of, on La Pasada towards Story Count will eventually increase the demand for general commercial, and we can expect retail space to expand. Although the paths have remained vacant for fifteen years, the Great Recession housing crisis and most recently COVID should be considered before any modifications to the PUD. Simply put, the retail has not been given a chance. The roads leading into Pioneer Meadows are still not fully open and the feeder to Pyramid opened during the pa- during a pandemic. Other storage units are under construction now within five miles of the requested change. In fact, a large storage facility is under construction less than eight thousand feet from Rayleigh's. The developers acknowledge it will be eighteen to twenty-four months before these proposed units would be built. Therefore, the demand is conceptual at best. We know that there is a demand now for shopping and food. The owners also acknowledged based on market changes, years later, that they may scrape the uh storage idea and return for retail space. It comes down to cost per square foot to them. Thank you.
This next email is from Leila Hatley. I re- good morning. I received a letter from Wood Rogers concerning a Zoom meeting on May sixth about the proposed storage unit planned adjacent to Rayleigh's on Wingfield Hills Road. Unfortunately, I cannot make that meeting. However, the members of my residence are not in support, are in support of the proposed storage units. Sorry, that was my bad. It's, let me say it again, are in support of the proposed storage units. With the increase of reg- residential homes and apartments in the area, more storage is needed. My personal experience in in finding a storage unit is that most larger-sized units are wait-listed or are too far away from my house to be considered. The proposed location is perfect for our storage location needs. I would like to know if there will be space within the enclosed storage area for RVs, boats, trailers, et cetera, for homeowners like myself to park our toys, since our HOA does not allow us to park them in our back or side yards. I do hope the builder slash owner will consider our needs in this capacity for homeowners who are looking for more toy storage as well. Also, if enough community is in opposition of the proposed location, hopefully the city of Sparks will find another location nearby to accommodate the storage need. For example, at the back end of the Eagle Canyon Baseball Park before the gun range. I think that is an excellent area to accommodate the need of storage and alleviate the eyesore according to many residents in the Wingfield area. Thank you, Leila Hatley.
Next email is received from Carla O'Day. Good evening, Chairman Pritzos and members of the Sparks Planning Commission. I live in Pioneer Meadows and oppose amending the Pioneer Meadows Master Plan to add self-storage to the list of uses. A self-storage facility would be incompatible with current surrounding land uses, which include residential, open space, community facility and commercial. There is al- already a mirad of storage facilities in the Truckee Meadows. Anyone wishing to develop another storage facility needs to consider placing it in indus- in an industrial lot, not near homes. The stretch of Wingfield Hills Road between Pyramid Way and Vista Boulevard has three roundabouts and is mostly residential. The road is not appropriate for oversized trucks, which will most likely be driven to and from the storage lot by people who are renting them and unaccustomed to operating large vehicles. Since rental trucks aren't considered commercial vehicles, almost anybody with a standard driver's license can operate one. This presents a safety issue as a senior living facility of, is across the street from the Rayleigh's Shopping Center, and many residents walk across Wingfield Hills Road near the roundabout. There are also people who live in nearby neighborhoods, including children who ride their bikes and walk to places such as Rayleigh's and Starbucks. I understand that grocery delivery trucks and school buses run on Wingfield Hills Road, but truck drivers and school bus drivers have been trained and have special licenses to operate such vehicles. Additionally, the staff report states that general retail isn't, not likely to be developed next to Rayleigh's in the foreseeable future. I find that hard to believe. Pioneer Meadows isn't fully built out. The scenario, Cinderella and Philly developments are in their early stages, along with several other housing developments further west off of Wingfield Hills Road. I enjoy shopping and dining close to home and others probably would too. Keep in mind that Wingfield Hills Road extension between Rolling Meadows Drive and Pyramid opened in March two thousand twenty as COVID nineteen pandemic hit. Prior to that, there hadn't been any access to the Rayleigh's Shopping Center from west of Rolling Meadows. Now there's access all the way to Pyramid, and it appears we're climbing out of the pandemic. This could mean great opportunity for for retail to expand at the shopping center in the foreseeable future. The Pioneer's Meadow Master Plan needs to stand as it is. Thank you for your time.
This next email is from Mohan Pod- Podmona Monaban, and I'm sorry for that pronunciation of your name. As an owner of a property at Pioneer Meadows, I oppose the proposed amendment to add self-storage at the Rayleigh's Lot. When I purchased my property, I was told that area is built for retail slash restaurants only. I prefer it to remain the same. I kindly request my opposition message to be read into the record for the agenda, storage facility at Pioneer Meadows and be provided to the board in written form before noon tomorrow. Thank you for your consideration.
The next email was received from Prudence Shapiro. To whom it may concern, I reside in Pioneer Meadows Riada. It is my understanding it has been requested to change the zoning to allow self-storage to be built next to the homes in my neighborhood. I am against the changes requested because of the additional noise, possible crime, and nuisance to this type of building may add. Also, it will devalue the homes in this small neighborhood, but built originally with smart living in mind. These homes exist on small footprints, some with solar plant panels and allow for living in nature in a nature setting. Self-storage could be built in better areas in Spanish Springs. Thank you for your time.
Next email is from Marie Smith. I oppose the proposed amendments to add self-storage to the list of permitted uses in the general commercial land use category. I live in the Riada Community. If the amendment is approved and the new self-storage is built adjacent to Rayleigh's, it will add noise, add twenty-four hour lighting, and be an eyesore. It will be a magnet for crime and may devalue our homes. It is already difficult to exit my neighborhood due to the increased traffic and this will just increase the traffic. I understand there is a need for self-storage. There is plenty of commercial and industrial property available for self-storage units, not adjoining residential housing. Please vote no on this request.
The next email is from George Spats. Dear Sparks Planning Commission Members, I want you to know I am strongly opposed to the proposed amendment to the final planned development handbook Pioneer Meadows Development Standards. Which adds self-storage to the list of permitted uses in the general or the GC land use category. Case number PCN twenty one dash zero 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 two with the increase in population coming to Pioneer Meadows and Wingfield Springs. This land is better suited for retail and eating establishments. The city of Sparks would benefit as well because having more restaurants and retail. Brings more revenue to the city versus a self-storage facility. Self-storage facilities are an eyesore. They resemble a prison with high walls and security gates. They all can also become a draw for crime. I'm concerned the quality of life in Wingfield Springs could suffer if this amendment is approved. The developers of this land accepted the current use when they purchased it. I understand they have an investment. But my largest investment is in the home I purchased in this area. I do not want it negatively impacted by this amendment.
This next email is from Margaret Spats. Dear Sparks Planning Commission Members, I strongly oppose the amendment to the final plan development handbook Pioneer Meadows Development Standards. Which adds self-storage to the list of permitted uses in the GC land use category. There are many potential land uses under the current regulations. With the increased population in Wingfield Springs, there is a need for more restaurants, shops, and other retail establishments. Which will also bring more revenue to the city of Sparks, more so than a self-storage facility will. There are many other areas in Sparks for a storage facility that will not negatively impact the quality of life of the community. Additionally, the storage facility may decrease the values of the nearby homes. The developers of this land accepted the current use when they purchased it. It is understandable that they have had a hard time finding tenants during the pandemic. But is excessive to change the permitted use simply to accommodate them. I understand that they have an investment, but my home is my largest investment and I do not want to negative negatively impact. It by changing the use I was guaranteed when I purchased my home. Sincerely, Margaret Spats.
The next email was received by Jeff Spitzer. My name is Jeff Spitzer and I've been involved in the Pioneer Meadows Master Plan since development began in two thousand four. I currently own several single-family homes in Pioneer Meadows and in the community on a weekly basis. I would like to share my thoughts on the proposed amendment to the Pioneer Meadows Handbook that would allow self-storage facility on a portion of the commercial property located in the master planned community. While the existing commercial development provides a great value to the current residents of Pioneer Meadows in the surrounding area. For the most part, it has struggled since it was built. There are many storefronts that have sat empty for years due to a lack of demanding demand resulting from an excess of re. From excess of retail options and the emergence of e-commerce over the years. Because of the above unemployment commercial undeveloped commercial properties have sat vacant for the past fifteen years, providing no benefit to the community or the city. My fear is that this will continue to be the case for the next fifteen years and beyond. After reviewing the proposed amendments to allow a self-storage use on the commercial parcels, I am strongly in favor of the city approving this amendment to the Pioneer's Pioneer Meadows Handbook. There is no question that it is a great need for this type of facility in the area. Throughout Washoe County, the cost of renting a storage space unit has increased by over two hundred percent over the last few years directly as a result of lack of availability. The residents of the home I leave. In Pioneer Meadows are told to use their garage for parking, but I'm constantly finding that they end up using them for storage. This means that they are cluttering up their driveways and the streets with their vehicles, leaving little room for visitors to park. While I realize there are those that will oppose this amendment, I can see no disadvantage to it. It fills a need from the local community and will allow for the remaining commercially. Area to be put to public use rather than sit vacant for another decade or two. I am confident that the city through the planning process will ensure the design and future development of a self-storage facility on this parcel would be done in quality. In aesthetically pleasing manner. Thank you for the opportunity to share my views on this matter.
Um, this this next email that I will read is actually a um. It is a letter and it was signed by several individuals from the Pioneer Meadows Master Association. To whom it may concern. The Pioneer Meadows Master Board of Directors is in receipt of the public hearing notice that is scheduled for Thursday, May sixth, two thousand twenty twenty-one. To discuss the consideration of the possible amendment to the final plan development handbook of the Pioneer Meadows Plan Development. The Board of Directors would like to bring to the Planning Commission's attention that the proposed amendment was not brought forth to the applicant. Being the Pioneer Meadows Master Board of Developers per the handbook section eleven point eleven. Furthermore, per section eleven dash twelve. It is the intent of this handbook to assure the developer that the design requirements for Pioneer Meadows are unders. Are understood and agreed upon between all parties involved. That was in quotes and the applicant in quotes was excluded from this process. The Pioneer Meadows Board of Directors does not feel this process was followed appropriately. And the proposed amendment is is not considered a in quote minor change as indicated by Wood Rogers. There are concerns that this may potentially bring home values down and an overall security concern to the surrounding community. This was signed by the President of Pioneer Meadows Association, the Vice President, and the Treasurer. I have one more letter to read in this email group. This email is from Maria Stevenson. Hello, City of Sparks. We are homeowners in the Saddle Brook neighborhood of Pioneer Meadows Homeowners Association. We are writing to voice our disapproval of the proposed storage facility for the area near Rayleigh's supermarket. We have a number of reasons why this storage facility will not benefit this community. First, the added traffic for an already horrible roadway will add to the burden we are already facing with individuals who choose not to follow the rules of the road. At this time, the entrance to that will be utilized by the proposed storage facility will take away one of the ways into Rayleigh's. And this will cause an increase in traffic using the main entrance at the roundabout. The Wingfield Hills Road is not equipped for such increase in traffic and not to mention the decrease in convenience for individuals that use that specific entrance. The added lighting that will be required to monitor storage will contribute to light pollution and will pose an issue. Having added light that is not wanted to those homes closest to the proposed location. Honestly, no one should want to look out their window to see the lights of a storage facility. The added noise pollution from cars and trucks coming in and out of the facility at all hours will be a huge issue. These lots should be reserved for businesses that will contribute to what is needed in the area versus storage. Stores in the area will operate during reasonable times versus having long or twenty-four hour access such as a storage facility. We have noticed that a number of storage facilities are being built throughout Sparks and Reno. With existing ones being as close as on Pyramid and on Vista. And they are away from most homes. There doesn't seem to be a need for another storage facility in the area. Moreover, it has been reported that across the nation and in Reno that the crime rate related to storage facilities is increasing. With the high probability of having an increase in criminal activity that has been reported to occur with storage facilities. There will be an increased concern for safety and well-being of our children and our homes. For instance, K O L O V T V recently reported a storage facility where someone stored explosives. Even though the device was fake, it still caused a disruption to the community and honestly, no one can guarantee that explosives would not be stored in the facility. Where they could be inadvertently detonated and cause massive harm. In conclusion, we are firmly against having a storage facility in our neighborhood. Maria Stevenson and Michael Gadberry. That concludes the emails that we were asked as clerks of the board to read into the record.
All right. Thank you very much for that. So do we have any members of the public who have called in who wish to speak on this item?
We do have requests to speak. First is a phone number ending in six, three, two, nine.
Okay. And caller, please state your name for the record.
All right. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm I'm Dan O'Day. I'm speaking to voice my opposition to this amendment. Mr. Carey referred to an email I sent earlier regarding the admission of DRC committee approval. Before I get started, I'd like to urge the board to read page V two in the handbook. It specifically mentions DRC approval for these type of modifications and amendments. Now, as both an owner and a resident of Pioneer Meadows, I was served on the area because of the amenities in the original plan, including the promise of a robust marketplace area, filled with shops and restaurants. The marketplace sits at the nexus of our community walking trail system. Our senior center and real location facility are directly across from this area. The residents of the community want from the marketplace. Now, the marketplace was built in two thousand seventies, maybe earlier, shortly before we entered the most severe economic recession of our lifetimes. New construction in the area came to a dead stop. Roads, infrastructure were left incomplete for years. Wingfield Hills Road, which is a road that connects the shopping center to Pyramid Highway, wasn't even open until a year ago. Right as we entered a global pandemic and we're all stuck at home. Now, you can understand why Pioneer Marketplace struggled. We've all struggled. All of us have been patiently waiting for the development to deliver on its promises and deliver on its potential. Now we're entering a rapid economic recovery. Houses are being built here in the neighboring development. So it's a point for a hundred and nine acres of business park. That's going to bring shoppers into the area during the day and during the evening. Without the robust marketplace as originally planned, these people are going to have to leave the area to eat and shop. That's going to cause increased congestion on Vista and Pyramid Highway. This runs contrary to the core objective of the development as stated in the handbook, because it increases vehicle mileage travel and negatively impacts our terms of future. The handbook did not include self-storage as one of the acceptable uses. The planned development zoning for the city of Sparks states that uses uses not listed in the new table are presumed to be prohibited. I believe the developers intended to prohibit that. Now, the proposed amendment negatively impacts the residents of the development, changes our land use and the neighborhood of the original developer did not include. Unless contrary to the development stated objectives and contrary to the findings does not preserve the integrity of the plan. Throwing the town on a large chunk of the Pioneer Meadows marketplace and replacing it with a self-storage facility is incredibly short-sighted and is based on past economic conditions. Not unlikely future conditions. I urge the planning commission to reject this amendment at this time. Thank you for listening.
All right. Thank you, sir. And who do we have next?
We have a phone caller ending in nine, eight, nine, one.
All right. And once again, caller, please state your name for the record. You might be muted. Caller with phone number ending in nine, eight, nine, one. Are you there?
Would we like to move on to the next?
Yeah, we'll see if they can figure the audio problem out.
Okay. So next we have Susan Merritt.
Okay.
Hi, I object to the projected handbook change to include self-storage in the proposed permit permitted area. That fifteen years of vacancies represents a time of years-long economics issues and cessation of construction that are no longer the case. Things have changed drastically because of renewed residential development in this neighborhood. I believe that property designated in the proposal needs to be retained for additional public facility services. And retail spaces needed by both the current neighbors of the area as well as the new neighbors coming in. There is already light industrial property closer to Pyramid that would be more appropriate placement for a storage facility. With Wingfield Hills Road now going all the way to Pyramid, that happened only last August. The massive number of new residents here in Pioneer Meadows and the opening up after COVID. Are going to make a need for expansion at the only community or commercial center. And marketplace that we have in our community. People coming now are able to come across to that Rayleigh's area. Whereas before they had to either go north or south on Pyramid in order to get to shopping. That's no longer the case. It has changed. So I think that that needs to be left to bring in a new business to the property without a storage facility there. Because of the current growth in this area, things have changed a lot.
All right. Thank you, caller. And who we have next?
Next, we have Caroline Harkins.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I oppose the change for most of the very same reasons. The owners are citing that they haven't been able to, you know, sell this property to big box stores. And that e-commerce or commerce is down, but they are building so many houses out there now and they've built so many apartments. That the demand for restaurants, medical, dental is just going to be huge in the next few years. And if you put in mini storage, it takes up a bunch of that area, you're just killing the potential for that shopping center to grow. It's a beautiful start to a shopping center. It's a really nice one. And if you throw a bunch of mini storage in there now, it's just going to kill it. I bought a house in there two years ago and I did not envision any kind of mini storage in that area whatsoever. I think it belongs in an industrial area and not in an area surrounded by homes and apartments. I I mean, having a restaurants nearby instead of having to drive five or 10 miles to go to a restaurant is a huge plus. People can drive to it without burning up a lot of gas. It's less pollution. They can walk to it. We've got some beautiful walking trails out there now. And it's just, I just don't think it's the right thing. You know, you've had a pandemic, you'd have a recession that have slowed things down. But the building out there of new homes is just going crazy and I and I just think you're going to ruin that shopping center by allowing mini storage in.
That's it.
All right. Thank you, caller. Um, all right. Do we have others who wish to speak on this item?
We do have additional requests to speak. Next would be Julie Riggs.
All right, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Julie Riggs and I'm a Pioneer's Meadow homeowner. And I am in favor of this project. Specifically, I think this is an appropriate use for this commercial space. And it offers a convenient location for self-storage that whole area does for all of those homeowners and all the new homes that are being built in the area. I've been driving past this vacant commercial space for many years and I think this use will complement the existing shopping center. And will be a benefit to the entire Pioneer's Meadow residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who do we have next?
Geraldine is going to speak next.
All right, go ahead caller.
Hello, this is Kalinda speaking and I live in the Rieda Homes. And I strongly oppose the addition of a storage facility at the proposed site. Listening to all this, it sounds like approving this is the last resort since the space couldn't be filled with anything else. There are a number of uses and it sounds like this is what is left or what has not been considered yet. While I understand that the big, big box stores will probably not be coming back, there are other uses for the community such as medical or business offices that could very well fill spaces like that. Our own storage facility has been broken into and there are enough chunk of cars, RVs and unsightly items stored in those places that this would be an eyesore all the way around and just not fitting into a neighborhood with a residential neighborhood. Like many callers said, this should be part of an industrial area, not residential area. And fiscal benefits for the owners seem to be the only thing that it has going for it. Because only a few employees will be required for this facility, which will not add to employment either. Thank you.
All right, thank you caller. Who do we have next, Casey?
We have Thomas Green next.
All right. Mr. Green, I just want to clarify, are you the same Tom Green who had an email read during the first part of this public comment?
Did I have an email read, Ms. Smith?
But I'm, hold on, checking.
There was one from a Tom Green. I'm just, I'm just checking.
Chair Pritzos, for clarification?
Yeah.
That was a letter from the Homeowners Association and Mr. Green was one of the signers.
Okay, then in that case, go ahead, Mr. Green.
Thank you, Board, and I want to thank all of you for your service to the city and the residents. I know you're all volunteers and it's appreciated. I come before the Board to voice my opposition to the requested change of the planning and development for Pioneer Meadows. I've been here since 2007 and I oppose this change. An integral component of the PUD was a one-stop living approach and a reduction in traffic to the city for homeowners who could live, shop, and work in the same area. The common trails in the community all come together at the marketplace, a clear indication of the desire to maintain a common gathering area. Pioneer Meadows established the rules and the PUD, and they've already reduced the acreage for the initial planned general commercial. They also reduced the planned parks by one and a half acres and completely abandoned the 10-acre school site in favor of higher density residential. While we understand the developers' desire to make a profit, in the PUD, the needs and desires of the homeowners outweigh that. This is codified in the Sparks Municipal Code. We've seen Sparks commercial space struggle over the years. We get it. As Sparks has grown, however, vacancy has declined. Look back at legends and how long the original commercial spaces remained vacant and yet it's vibrant today. The Board, more than anyone, is aware of the future growth of East Sparks to La Pasada and eventually to Story County. This will drive demand to areas such as Pioneer Meadows for retail. Although the pads have remained vacant for 15 years, consideration of the Great Recession, housing crisis, and most recently COVID should be weighed before any modifications to PUD. I believe there's a strong demand for restaurants, boutique retail, and office space coming soon. Other storage units are under construction right now, many within five miles of this marketplace. Just 8,000 feet away, a storage unit facility is going to open soon. The developers acknowledge that it'll be 18 to 24 months before these units would even be built, so the demand is conceptual at best. We know there's demand now for shopping and food. The owners also acknowledge that the, based on market drivers years later, they may scrap the whole thing and tear it down and go back to retail. I want the Board to be aware that only the property owners notified per statute. Wood Rogers had to admit that none of the residents living in Morning Star were notified. Even though they represent a large contingent of Pioneer Meadows with hundreds of elderly residents, many confined to wheelchairs and walkers, they would benefit from the marketplace as planned. Lastly, I'd ask the Board to carefully weigh the needs and desires of the residents of Pioneer Meadows over the square foot return on investment, as Mr. Andrew Derling said, was important in the community meeting. The PUD should remain as planned for the benefit of the community and to fulfill the promises made to these homeowners. The requested change is not minor. In fact, it's a foundational change to the objectives set forth in the PUD. Thank you for your time and please vote against this.
All right, thank you caller. Who do we have next, Casey?
We have Kevin Grogan next.
All right. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, I'm Kevin Grogan. I just wanted to go on record that I strongly oppose adding this use to the property in this area. I agree wholeheartedly with all my neighbors' comments, which have been read or spoken so far. And as an owner of a property and occupant directly adjacent to such a facility, I strongly believe it would devalue my property to have a storage facility here. I'm not in favor as I would be overlooking the property daily and I have a backyard bordering such a thing. Thank you for your time and consideration.
All right, thank you, sir. Do we have any others?
We do. We have two additional. The next is going to be Hannah Carrier.
Okay.
Hello, I am a current resident here in the Pioneer Meadows. And I am actually agreeing to the proposal, to the amendment. I believe that it'd be very helpful to have a storage unit close by. I know that with friends and everything, it's really hard to find storage. There's waiting lists and things like that. So having it close by and also having, you know, potential RV or boat storage would be very convenient for, you know, us residents here that have that, that are not able to store that in their home because due to HOA rules. I, again, I just, I agree to this and I thank you for your time.
All right, thank you very much caller. All right, do we have any other people who wish to speak at this time?
The last request to speak is the the phone number ending in nine, eight, nine, one.
Oh, okay. And please state your name for the record, caller.
It looks as, oh, there we go.
Oh, there we go.
Chair, okay. Chair Pritzos and Commissioners, thank you for taking comment on this important issue. My name is Joni Hammond and I live in a house at Riada, which is directly adjacent to the proposed new self-storage. Riada is the community directly west, not mentioned by the city in the presentation, and is closest to this proposal. I am also representing the Riada Homeowners Association Board of Directors and representing 102 Riada community members. Even though the city stated there were 23 emails, I have a petition that I submitted with 102 signatures. All of us oppose this proposed planned amendment to add self-storage to the list of permitted uses in the general commercial land use category. As noted by the city and the applicant, we live near the Vista Rayleigh's with a variety of restaurants, banks, title companies, and a gym in the immediate area. When we bought our houses, we were told the vacant area near Rayleigh's would be built out with the same type of use as already here. Nothing like two huge self-storage buildings that can be built as tall as Rayleigh's. How would you like to look out your backyard and have a wall rather than the sun? This change in use is not what we want or need. The owners of the proposed self-storage property say that they have tried unsuccessfully to find tenants to know of them. Other commenters tonight have mentioned that with COVID and now we're getting out of COVID and also a new road, I think that could change. There's plenty of new growth in houses in the area, which means a lot more people. And there's plenty of properly zoned property to build self-storage in Sparks and Reno. Please vote no. We're opposed to the noise, dust, eyesore, additional 24/7 lighting, traffic, potential for crime, and devaluation of our homes. Thank you.
All right, thank you caller. Casey, do we have anyone else who wishes to speak on this item?
I have no additional requests to speak.
All right.
Chair Pritzos, Chair Pritzos, may I just add to that last caller? I would like to just say that she did provide a petition. That petition was uploaded to the website and was provided to the Commissioners.
All right, thank you very much, Marilee. And then I'll just check one more time. Are there any, anyone requesting to speak before I close?
No additional requests.
All right, so with that, then I will close public comment on this item. Do any of the Commissioners have any further questions or discussion? Yes, Commissioner Reed.
Thank you, Chair Pritzos. I was looking through the exhibits and I did not, I mean, we're not approving architectural at this point, but I was just wondering, are these structures going to be like two-story or greater? As I think somebody asked that earlier.
I can answer that question for you if you'd like, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, Jonathan.
So you're right, we don't know what the design looks like. They, you know, they would be allowed to build to a certain height, which would include multiple stores if they, if they chose to do that based on the standards they proposed. Again, those height limits wouldn't be inconsistent with what's rebuilt there in the commercial center. But I believe that answered your question.
Yeah, that's, that's great. And I, I had one other follow-up question, if I may.
Yeah.
I can't remember what the question was.
If it comes to you, if it comes to you, go ahead.
It was about the lighting. Somebody had, one of the things that multiple people mentioned was 24-hour lighting. But I was just wondering, is the whole shopping center generally lit because of security purposes? And will the storage facility be lit 24 hours as well?
So, so what I can speak to is that, yes, there is lighting at the existing commercial sites throughout the night, but it's, it's not the full lighting that you would have during the day or during the early parts of the evening when, you know, you would need the lights, but it wasn't after hours. One of the requirements that staff did recommend, which didn't get included in the proposed language, would be that any lighting proposed for the, for the site would require that the application would include a photometric plan, which would show that there would be zero foot candle worth of light value at the property lines, meaning that no lights would be shining off the property. They'd all be shining downwards so that no neighbors should be disturbed by any lights.
Okay, great. That's all questions I have.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Reed. I think the next hand I saw was Commissioner Carey.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question for staff. The applicant in their presentation talked about the type of facility they're, they're envisioning. I think the mention was, the specific term was Class A self-storage space, and they talked about a couple other sort of uses. I'm looking through the handbook and I don't see in the definitions, you know, of what, what's proposed. Like what exactly would, would be built? And so with the administrative review process, as you mentioned before, there's not a public notification period. There's not any sort of additional public review. It kind of just goes to staff. I'm curious if this handbook amendment is, is approved. What sort of guarantee or expectation can, can, can the public expect? Of what sort of self-storage facility would be built on this site?
So to sort of call back to the points that I made in my presentation about how the design standards as proposed are going to guide the review of natural projects is that the design not only has to meet the requirements of the commercial design standards of the handbook, also meet the DRC approval, but, but what staff would be looking for based on those standards would be consistency with the surrounding center. And so that's where we have, there may not be specific language in there that says a self-storage facility should look exactly like this or that. But what they do is, is guide us through that process where we're looking for consistency with surrounding based on materials, colors, and scale. So there's also setbacks, there's building height limits, things like that, which are going to ultimately guide how, how the overall site is going to be required to be consistent with the surrounding commercial uses, but also to be sensitive to the, the overall scope of what's, what's, what's around it, which is residential in some places.
Fair enough. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner West.
Yes, my, my question is for staff as well. The claim's been made that basically improper procedures for approval have been made that this project didn't go through DRC before it was presented to the city of Sparks. Is this correct?
So if the chair would entertain it, I would be glad to show my screen, which has
Go ahead.
Handbook language, which will clarify that for us. Here is one moment. Are you seeing handbook page with the highlighted word amendments here?
Yep.
Any amendment made to the approved handbook will be processed through the City of Sparks Planning Commission and City Council prior to the application of hold neighborhood meeting, noticing of such meeting shall conform to the noticing requirement stated in section five of this handbook. Amendment noticing shall be from the perimeter of the area proposed for the amendment. The City of Sparks may amend this handbook subject to the provisions of the development agreement. Those are the requirements for amending the handbook.
Thank you.
All right, Armando, did I see your hand raised?
The, I was just going to amplify or add to Mr. Cummings' comments regarding standards. One thing I will note is that with regard to architectural design, of course, it is subject to the design standards in, in the Pioneer Meadows handbook. And as proposed in, in the amendment is subject to the Pioneer Meadows, the approval of the Pioneer Meadows Design Review Committee. So, you know, if you go through the standards in, in the handbook, the proposed standards for this, they're pretty, you know, they, they address all of the requirements that staff would be applying to that, to that project through the administrative review process. But I wanted to, again, emphasize something that Mr. Cummings said during his initial presentation, which is that it would be subject to approval by the Design Review Committee in terms of the architectural design for the, for the project.
All right, thank you very much for that. Are there any other questions or any discussion at this time? All right, seeing none, then I will entertain a motion. Commissioner Carey.
Mr. Chairman, you know, I appreciate all the public comment that was brought up tonight. And I think there's a lot of legitimate land use concerns that, that were brought up tonight from the public concerning the self-storage use in, in this handbook. I can certainly appreciate the applicant and the position that they are in. You know, I, I don't think it does the city any good from a fiscal standpoint. I don't think it does the development overall any good if, if we have a vacant, vacant property. And I want to be flexible and allow, you know, more vibrancy for this, for this, this center. But I'm just kind of, I'm really concerned, you know, when this handbook was approved, self-storage was left out for, for a reason. And I think the people that bought their homes and, and built their homes have an expectation that, you know, that self-storage wouldn't be here. So here we are coming through, we're amending the handbook. But I'm a little concerned about the proposal to have it be an administrative review process. I think there were some land use concerns that were brought up tonight by the public that could be addressed through a conditional use permit process. And I think there's some, there's, you know, I, I appreciate the applicant's information and the type of project that they proposed. And I think our staff would do a good job in the administrative review process, you know, ensuring compatibility and making inconsistency with design standards. But I just feel we're kind of pulling the rug underneath from everybody who has an expectation. And I would, I would prefer, if, if we were going to allow this use, that the handbook would be amended to allow self-storage as a, through a conditional use permit, which would require additional public notification and a public hearing. as a, through a conditional use permit, which would require additional public notification and a public hearing in an opportunity to further look at those land use impacts and get a, in more perspective on that. That's my two cents.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Carey. Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
I move to forward to City Council a recommendation of approval of the request to amend the final approved plan for the Pioneer Meadows Plan Development based on findings A through J and the facts supporting those findings as set forth in the staff report.
All right, thank you. Are there, is there any second?
I will second that motion, Mr. Chair.
All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Reed and a second by Commissioner Kramer. Any final discussion? Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of comments. I, I will not be supporting the motion reluctantly. I, I don't think that I can make finding PDE or PDF. We have several other storage uses in the city that we've seen as a commission that have a lot of land use impacts. And I think there should be an additional, I don't think they should be allowed by, permitted by right. There should be additional public input on this. I think in all fairness, I kind of mentioned that a little bit early, but to allow self-storage now after the fact to the Jason property owners, I don't think that, that, that's, that's sufficient. I believe there should be additional public process. But I think from a land use planning perspective, and I, and I hope I'm wrong about this. I, I hope that what, if, if this is motion is approved and whatever self-storage is built and it's high quality, it's of the Class A type that, that was a mission. But I'm not seeing in this handbook amendment that there's any assurances that it, that, that it could just be any sort of self-storage use that combines with the, the complies with the handbook standards. But I think from a land use planning perspective and, and specific finding PDA, you know, we spent a lot of time last summer going over and revising policy MG3, which is to make sure that the city has, and we're creating employment generating uses. And here we are, not six months later, amending the handbook to, to put in a new use that doesn't have, it doesn't, doesn't require a lot of employment, employment uses. And I, and I think that that's, it's pretty disingenuous to our, to our, our comprehensive plan. I don't think that helps furthers, furthers that goal or, or policy. So I will not be supporting the motion. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Carey. Commissioner West.
Yes, I, I want to thank Commissioner Carey for so eloquently expressing, you know, the concerns. You've brought some good concerns forward to all of us for consideration. I think a lot of that has resulted, you know, as a result of, you know, all the comments that we have heard. I also agree that, you know, that the concept here, it, it seems reasonable. However, I, I think because the Pioneer handbook, you know, is being modified or, or requests for changes that I would, I too would like to see the approval go through a more comprehensive process. So I, at this time, would also have to consider not approving this amendment request.
All right, Commissioner Rossen.
Yeah, I want to express that I don't approve this either. I, I think Commissioner Carey did a great job on laying out the reasons why. So my comment, I'm not going to support it either.
All right, is there any other comment or discussion at this time?
Mr. Chair, may I ask for a point? Is this an appropriate time to ask for a point of clarification?
Uh, sure, yeah.
I just want to make sure I understand. Based on the everything that was presented, will the staff then take the, I guess, what are the next steps? Will this actually come back to the Planning Commission at some point for a final review and approval with the design process? Or is it all going to happen through the staff doing, you know, a lot of hard work to, to adhere to the standards that are in place and the provisions that are currently in place? Will the commission be seeing this? I'm only asking, and I apologize for asking what might be a very rudimentary question, but I would like that point of clarification.
Yeah, Armando, did you want to take that?
Yes, please, Chair Pritzos and members of the, the Planning Commission, Armando Ornelas, the Assistant Community Services Director. So Commissioner Andriola, to answer your question, the item you are taking action on this evening regarding to this amendment to the handbook, you are acting in advisory capacity, if you will. You're making a recommendation to the City Council. The City Council will then consider the proposed amendment. Either the, the approval or denial of a recommendation of approval. In whatever form it moves on, it will, it will move on to the City Council and they will make the decision regarding this proposed amendment to the, to the handbook. As, as fashioned, the, you know, if, if ultimately this amendment were, let's say, just for argument's sake, approved as, as in the form that you are seeing it tonight, the actual project, the self-storage project would not come back to the Planning Commission. It would be reviewed through the administrative review process, i.e. by, by, by city staff. And there would not be any, any notice to adjacent property owners. It would be, again, reviewed by staff as to whether or not it complied with the, the standards in the, in the handbook that are proposed before you tonight. Hope that addresses your question.
Yes, thank you very much. That's how I understood it, but I, I felt the necessity to get the clarification you so stated. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, thank you. Are there any other, any other discussion? So I just, I just want to say, I actually, I share many of the concerns of many of my colleagues on this. I think that especially the, as Commissioner Carey put it, going through the administrative review process rather than through the CPU process or CUP. Yeah, CUP. I, I do, I, I'm also going to be opposing this motion for the, the reasons that Commissioner Carey, Commissioner West and Commissioner Rossen also noted. Okay, is there any final discussion? Okay, so seeing none, oh, yes, Commissioner Andriola.
I am, you know, based on the clarification and the comments, certainly all of the comments from the public and, and certainly staff has done an incredible job and a lot of hard work, definitely. But I, I too have some concerns as well, and I will be not approving this motion.
All right, so one more time, any other final discussion? Okay, so seeing none, we have a motion by Commissioner Reed, and I believe it was seconded by Commissioner Andriola. So Madam Secretary, could we please have the roll? Or Commissioner Kramer was the second.
Point of clarification. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry. It was a while ago. All right, now maybe we have the roll.
Okay, so for clarification right now, Chair Pritzos, the motion that's on the table is for approval, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Pritzos.
Nay.
Commissioner West.
Nay.
Commissioner Andriola.
Nay.
Commissioner Carey.
Nay.
Commissioner Kramer.
Aye.
Commissioner Rossen.
Nay.
And Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
All right, so motion fails with Commissioners Reed and Kramer voting aye and Commissioners Pritzos, Carey, West, Andriola, and Rossen voting nay. Brandon, just to clarify, because I know we've had this come up before, all we've done is defeat the motion, but if we wanted to recommend to council that they do not approve this proposed amendment, then we have to have another motion to.
That is correct. That was the, this was the issue that was updated in the procedure
Okay.
about a year and a half ago and then it's again a couple of months ago. So it would have been seconded.
And, and so is there any, like, we can do that motion now, right? They, we don't have to, to like wait and, okay. So would anyone like to make a alternative motion? Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll, I'll give this a shot. Not sure where this is going to go. But I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion to forward to the City Council a recommendation of approval of the request to amend the final approved handbook for the Pioneer Meadows Plan Development with the change that self-storage would be permitted in the handbook through a conditional use permit process based on findings A through J and the facts supporting those findings as set forth in the, in the staff report.
Just to make sure, is there any, Brandon, is that, that acceptable way of phrasing that? You're muted. You, you're muted, Brandon. We couldn't hear you.
Sorry about that. I, I think so. I didn't see any issues with the form of the motion.
All right, perfect. So we have a motion by Commissioner Carey. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Chair.
All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Carey and a second by Commissioner West. Any discussion on this motion?
You know, Mr. Chair, I, I see that there are other storage units within the city of Sparks that are identical to the ones that they are proposing at Pioneer Meadows. There's one on Vista Boulevard. There's one on Los Altos. There's one up by another one on Vista Boulevard. They're no different than the one that they are requesting out of Pioneer Meadows. I, I don't, I don't see the difference here. The one on Vista Boulevard over by the post office, it's right next to the post office. And you can, you don't, you don't see it. You don't see where it is. You don't, you don't even notice it. The one on the corner of Los Altos and, and Vista sits right next to Little Bear. And there's apartments next door. There's a medical built facility and office buildings. There's, there's the city executive suites that are townhouses that are going right across the street. So we are asking this developer to do something different? I don't get it. So, so what, what's the difference here, guys? I, I'm not, I'm not seeing the difference. Because it's Pioneer Meadows and it's out farther towards Wingfield, is there a difference that we are now asking these guys to do? So those are my comments on this. So now we're asking them to, to get a CUP, to do something different than we've just, than, than has been done in the past? So my comments on this. So that's, that's my comment, guys.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Kramer.
You're welcome.
Is there any other discussion on this? All right, seeing none. We have a motion by Commissioner Carey and a second by Commissioner West. Madam Secretary, may we have the roll call?
Commissioner Pritzos.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Andriola.
Aye.
Commissioner Carey.
Aye.
Commissioner Kramer.
Nay.
Commissioner Rossen.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Nay.
All right, motion passes five to two Commissioners Pritzos, West, Andriola, Carey, and Rossen voting aye and Commissioners Kramer and Reed voting nay. All right, so before we move on to the next item, we've been going for a little more than two and a half hours. I think everyone could probably use a break, so I'm going to order a 10-minute recess, get drinks, use the restroom, and then we will reconvene at 8:49. Okay, looks, uh, uh, still waiting on Brandon.
We're just getting warmed up, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. I got three things of water, just, just.
I got to eat something.
Huzzah! Alright, so, uh, we're gonna call this meeting, uh, back into order. Uh, it is eight fifty. Uh, and we are moving on to the last of our public hearing items. Uh, it had been item seven, it is now item eight. Uh, PCN nineteen dash zero zero four zero. And I think this is CNN.
Uh, yes, it is. Uh, thank you, Chair Pritzos, uh, for the record of, and Planning Commission members, uh, for the record, CNN Reed. Uh, with the Planning Division presenting this item tonight, uh, which is a request to amend the Five Bridges Conditional Use Permit. For development on slopes, hilltops and ridges. This item was continued three weeks ago from your April fifteenth Planning Commission meeting. The Five Bridges Project Site, which you can see here in red, totals four hundred and twenty-one point five eight acres in size. And is located west of Pyramid Way and north of Highland Ranch Parkway. The Five Bridges Project Site is subject to a development agreement that was approved in twenty eighteen. That agreement specifies that a minimum of twelve hundred and a maximum of eighteen hundred residential units are permitted. And dictates the required infrastructure needed to serve the development based on its impacts. The agreement also limits the total land area disturbed, uh, that, or that can be disturbed by grading to two hundred and ninety-eight acres. And requires a minimum of one hundred and twenty acres of open space. This request, uh, that you're considering tonight to amend the Five Bridges Conditional Use Permit, or CUP, for development on slopes, hilltops and ridges. Seeks to increase the disturbance area for natural slopes by a total of nineteen point eight acres. The existing CUP allows for the disturbance of one hundred and thirty-eight point one three acres of natural slopes. This area, plus the center of Five Bridges that was previously disturbed due to mining and roadway construction, are shown in green. The requested nineteen point eight acre expansion area is shown in tan. And it includes the northwest portions of Villages eight and nine and limited areas on the north sides of Villages one A, one B, three and ten. As you can see, the currently approved CUP allows for disturbance of most of the Five Bridges site. Including disturbance within Village ten in the northern portion of the site. And large portions of Villages eight and nine located in the northwest portion of the site. A mass grading permit has been issued for grading in this approved disturbance area. Uh, however, it's important to note that the scope of the review for the CUP amendment is not limited to just the nineteen point eight acre area shown in tan. This is because grading plans for Villages one A, one B, eight, nine and ten, which were not provided with the initial CUP. Have been provided with the CUP amendment. This change allows the Planning Commission to review those grading plans for those villages. And apply conditions that further address the final look of slopes and building design, but don't impact the existing mass grading permit. If the CUP amendment is not approved, future, uh, tentative maps and building permits within the approved disturbance area. Would need to comply with the existing conditions, not the proposed amended conditions that further address the final look of slopes and building design. To remind you of the proposed grading, the slide illustrates grading in the southern portion of Five Bridges for Villages one A and one B. So for Village one A, fill will be used to create a building pad that sits approximately fifty to sixty-five feet above Highland Ranch Parkway. For Village one B, slopes in the northern portion of that village will be cut. And fill will be used to create a building pad that is similar in elevation to Highland Ranch Parkway on the west side and fifteen feet above it on the east side. This slide shows you proposed grading for Villages eight, nine and ten with a cut fill map. Uh, that map illustrates cuts in red and orange and fills are then illustrated in blue and green. As proposed, the grading plans illustrate that existing hilltop and ridge features located in the northern portion of the Five Bridges Project Site will be cut. And fill material will be used to expand the ridge north of Villages nine and ten and west of Villages eight and nine. Graded slopes with a gradient of two to one or fifty percent will be stabilized with a revegetated bonded fiber matrix or riprap. And bedrock cut slopes with a gradient of one point five to one or sixty-six percent are also proposed in limited locations. But those slopes don't require mechanical stabilization. As you know, from the April fifteenth meeting where this item was initially heard. CUPs for development on slopes, hilltops and ridges are complex and they require that various code standards and CUP findings be considered. The Five Bridges CUP amendment was analyzed against each of the code standards and CUP findings that you can see on this slide. In the April fifteenth, uh, staff report provided to the Planning Commission. Just to give a little bit of recap, the code standards, uh, for development on slopes, hilltops and ridges are set forth in Sparks Municipal Code Section. Twenty dot zero four dot oh one one. These standards include design policies that guide the finished appearance of slopes and buildings to mitigate the visual impact of development. Grading standards set the maximum area of disturbance for a site. Standards, uh, that require temporary erosion and sedimentation measures during construction and associated bonding are also in place. As well as standards for landscaping and vegetation of disturbed areas that require ninety percent coverage within three years. Additional standards govern undisturbed open space and hilltops and ridge lines determined to be significant by the city. Of which there are none in the Five Bridges Project Site. Uh, in addition, the CUP amendment request must conform with the general CUP findings related to consistency with the comprehensive plan. Compatibility with adjacent properties, natural resource impairment and the population that can be supported with available natural resources. How identified impacts are addressed is submitted or conditioned and public notice. In analyzing these findings and code standards, staff reached a recommendation of approval because the CUP amendment mitigates the impact. Of development on slopes, hilltops and ridges, which is what these standards and findings collectively require. To promote quality development and limit the visual impact of that development. I hear the primary comprehensive plan that guides the mitigation of development of, on steep slopes and ridge lines is shown on this slide. Policy RC twenty-eight supports land areas disturbance limitations in code. And the use of architectural techniques that limit the scenic and environmental impact of hillside development. This policy does not prohibit development on steep slopes or ridge lines. This policy is implemented through all of the code standards, uh, for development on slopes, hilltops and ridges discussed on the previous slide. However, the design policies, uh, that are specifically shown on this slide. Detail how graded areas and buildings on home, on hilltops and ridges should be mitigated to limit the visual impact of development. Not only should development on steep slopes limit aesthetic degradation, erosion, sedimentation. But final grading should not include long slopes with sharp transitions so that a natural looking, uh, final slope is achieved. And the placement of buildings on or near hilltops or ridges must show a high degree of sensitivity to the terrain and its visual impact. Development that uses mitigation techniques to meet these design policies is permissible. To mitigate the impact of development on the Five Bridges Site, new and amended conditions are recommended. Condition three, as amended, would require fill slopes located at the perimeter of Five Bridges to provide additional horizontal relief. Beyond contouring to result in a more natural appearance. Condition six, as amended, would require homes and buildings at the perimeter of Villages eight, nine and ten, which you can see shown in pink. On the map on this slide, to have an increased rear yard setback of thirty feet for two-story structures. And a fifteen-foot height limitation for accessory structures and dwellings. This is in addition to the current requirement that homes and buildings on ridge lines use earth tone colors and roof lines that blend with the natural environment. Conditions eight and ten require retaining walls and the Village nine guard rail be designed to blend into the surrounding natural landscape. To ensure these features are not visually intrusive. And to further mitigate the visual impact of development at the perimeter of Villages eight, nine and ten. Condition nine requires fencing located on rear line, rear lot lines, uh, be at least seventy-five percent open construction. With these new and amended conditions, uh, that have been recommended by staff, it's the role of the Planning Commission to determine if these conditions. Satisfactorily mitigate the impact of development in a manner that limits overall aesthetic degradation of the site. And results in homes and buildings on hilltops or ridges that show that high degree of sensitivity to, uh, the natural terrain. And the visual impact of development. During the April fifteenth, uh, public hearing, various questions and concerns were raised by the Planning Commission. And the public on the CUP amendment, uh, and you can see on this slide comments from the Planning Commission. Regarding the application of CUP finding three, there are two components, uh, of this finding that are interrelated. Uh, those were discussed, one being the potential impairment of natural resources, the other being the total population that available natural resources can support. Without unreasonable impairment. Uh, and here natural resources, as was discussed, that support population growth generally include potable water resources, treated airflow and air resources. Little impairment to natural resources that support population growth are anticipated with this amendment. While steep slopes are part of the environment, they are not natural resources necessary to support population growth. The comprehensive plan and code govern land disturbance and the appearance of buildings and created slopes. And both allow for development on steep slopes and ridge lines with mitigation. Moving on to, uh, the second point on this slide, housing type in the nineteen point eight acre disturbance area. Would be detached single-family consistent with the single-family zoning district. In regard to constructing the Five Bridges Project in previously disturbed areas. Um, that question was raised and while it may be feasible to locate lots for Villages eight, nine and ten within the. Uh, approved disturbance area by using the small lot standards and code. These standards would lead to homes on, uh, small lots that are constructed closer together than development under the regular SF six standards. And that would support development on the ridge lines within Villages nine and ten that is visually, uh, more obtrusive than development that complies with the SF six zoning district. Uh, for, uh, comment four, uh, here on this slide relating to visual impacts being considered. Within the currently approved disturbance area. Condition six is currently approved addresses ridge line sensitive design with the requirement that. Color and roof lines of homes blend with the natural surrounding environment. Uh, however, with this middle of grading plans for Village, Villages eight, nine and ten in the north of the site. Staff is recommending condition six be amended to further require, uh, that development at the perimeter of those villages. Uh, to mitigate the visual impact of homes and structure, structures constructed on ridge lines. The Planning Commission also expressed concern regarding compliance with policy RC twenty-eight. Uh, conformance with this policy and the development standards that implement it were, were previously discussed in relation to the recommended. Conditions of approval to mitigate the impact of development on steep slopes. With written and spoken comments, uh, members of the public also raised various concerns regarding the proposed CUP amendment. Uh, briefly, uh, here topics one through four are engineering related. Um, as designed, the drainage system, uh, which includes storm channels, pipes, detention ponds, sedimentation basins. That system will reduce peak stormwater flow rates by fifty percent and increase sediment volume capacity on the site. For rockery walls, uh, supplemental materials provided by the applicant. Indicate one rockery wall is planned within Five Bridges and that's within Village one A located at the southern portion of the site. A building permit for that wall was issued because it meets building code standards. Uh, additionally, supplemental materials, uh, were provided by the applicant. Uh, to give a little bit more detail regarding the bonded fiber matrix to address revegetation concerns. Uh, so here, the Flex Terra bonded fiber matrix, bonded fiber matrix, uh, product, excuse me. Uh, is proposed to provide the native seed blend with an enhanced growth medium that is capped and insulated. With the long-lasting bonded fiber matrix, providing sufficient erosion control until those created slopes are revegetated. And it's important to note that this treatment is considered superior to basic hydroseed applications. And all created slopes must be irrigate, irrigated until native growth is established. Um, additionally, rockfall practices used during mass grading activities are documented to detail. How this work occurs safely and address comment four. Uh, additional public comments provided also expressed concerns regarding the proximity of created slopes to property lines. Here code does not require distance separation between. Here code does not require distance separation between created slopes and adjacent property lines that apply to the five bridges project site. And with regards to traffic congestion. This request does not alter the number of dwelling units that can be constructed on the five bridges project site consistent with the. Development agreement that's in place, nor the improvements necessary to accommodate the development of five bridges that were documented in the master traffic study. And memorialized in the agreement. Moving on to this next slide, various public comments expressed concern regarding ridge lines. Uh as discussed throughout this presentation, both the comprehensive plan and code allow for development on steep slopes and ridge lines with mitigation. With regards to goals and policies of the Washoe County Spanish Springs Area Plan. This plan does not apply to the five bridges site, only to properties located in unincorporated Washoe County. Pursuant to state law, the city of Sparks Comprehensive Plan and the municipal code are utilized to administer the city's legally established planning and zoning authority. Um additional public comments provided also claim that the zoning code should be amended. To identify significant ridge lines on the five bridges site. Significant hilltops and ridge lines are not identified for locations in the city of Sparks west of Pyramid Way. Based on the cooperative planning effort that produced the two thousand and eight West Pyramid Area Plan. That planning effort did not identify ridge lines as significant within the boundary of the West Pyramid Area Plan and accordingly. Hilltops and ridge lines west of Pyramid Way were not identified on the significant hilltop and ridge line map. When the zoning code was comprehensively updated in twenty fifteen. Um additionally, public comments express concern uh regarding rock outcroppings. Rockout croppings are present on the five bridges site in the approved disturbance area. In the northwest corner of villages eight and nine and in the western portion of five bridges where open spaces planned. Well, policy RC thirty indicates that new development should preserve and protect unique features such as rockout croppings and drainage ways. This policy does not indicate that all such features should be preserved. And as proposed, the CUP amendment preserves rockout croppings located in the western portion of the five bridges site. With regard to the loss of open space and public access. The five bridges project site is neither designated open space pursuant to the comprehensive plant land use map. Nor owned by a public entity that allows public access. With regard to concerns uh that were expressed over habitat loss. Uh there are no threatened or endangered species located on the five bridges project site. Uh and the Washoe County Conservation Plan further indicates the site doesn't provide habitat for big horn sheep. Black bear, mule deer, raptors, sage grouse, wild horses or burrows. Concerns on public notice uh were also expressed. Public notice for this CUP amendment was provided in compliance with state law for both the April fifteenth. And this May sixth public hearing. And since the April fifteenth planning commission meeting until noon today. Um city staff has received two phone calls and seventy-seven emails in opposition to the request. Many of the stated concerns are consistent with the topics just discussed on uh this slide and the slide previous. So in continuing this item um to this evening, the planning commission requested supplemental visual information be provided. Based on the commission's direction, the cross-sections are updated to include photographs of existing topography. Uh these updated cross-sections are attached to the staff report addendum prepared for this meeting. A three D rendering that provides a visual simulation of proposed grading and future development was also prepared by the applicant as requested. Staff has reviewed that three D rendering and believes it accurately depicts the proposed grading. And simulates the location of homes as proposed by condition six. That recommends a thirty-foot rear yard setback for two-story homes located. At the perimeter of villages eight, nine and ten. Again, those villages are in the northern portion of the site. Given that uh the three D rendering information is is fairly technical in nature, the five bridges project team is going. Uh to walk through that visual simulation as part of their presentation. Um however, for uh turning it over to the applicant, uh staff is recommending approval of the five bridges conditional use permit amendment. With ten conditions and you have a motion uh to that effect on this slide and then in the April fifteenth staff report. Uh and again, the analysis of the applicable CUP findings and code sections is provided. Uh in the April fifteenth planning commission staff report. Uh the addendum that was provided for this meeting uh really attempts to respond to the comments. Uh and concerns of the planning commission in public as well as provide that that supplemental visual information. And so with that, um I'll conclude my presentation and uh certainly be available for for questions at the appropriate time.
Okay, thank you very much, Sienna. Um. Are there questions? Oh, actually Commissioner Carey uh had something to say before we continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I I I made a mistake. Um shock it up to being three hours into this, but. Um before they opened the item, I wanted to make a public disclosure. Um to you and my colleagues on the commission for the record, but I didn't want to interrupt Sienna's excellent presentation. Uh so I'll just read this off. In an effort to avoid conflicts of interest and enhance and maintain public trust pursuant to NRS two eighty-one A. Point zero two zero. I want to, I'd like to voluntarily disclose. But since the last commission meeting, I've had one meeting with the applicant and project team on April thirtieth. And I had one meeting with several property owners who were notified of this project where I visited portions of the site on April nineteenth. Um additionally, as a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, AICP, I am bound by a. Code of Ethics and and professional conduct in the spirit of this code and then and then the principles that ASC AICP members. Are bound uphold. I'd like to disclose a note for the record that I did meet with the applicant and the neighbors. At their request to discuss this project and to seek additional information for this agenda item. At no time during my meetings that I ever convey any pre-disposed opinion on this matter. In accordance with NRS two eighty-one A four twenty section one, I will note for the record, I have not received a gift or loan. I did not have any significant pecuniary interest with, nor do I have any commitment in a private capacity to any of the people. That I've met with concerning this agenda item. Thank you very much. And I I wanted to also note that I that I will be continuing to deliberate on this project and will be voting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Carey. So before we get to questions for Sienna, does anyone else need to make any disclosures? Uh Commissioner Reed.
Well, mine's not going to be as elaborate to ask Commissioner Carey. But I did want to disclose it. I did respond to an email from a Mr. Mike Eastman inviting all the commissioners to view his. Property. I respectfully declined his invitation. As I have been at the site multiple times on my own, so. I'm not going to cite any other rules and regulations. I think that's sufficient.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Reed. Uh does anyone else need to make any disclosures before we? Okay, seeing none then, uh do any members of the commission have questions for staff at this time? Okay, I see none. Uh I understand that the applicant uh is prepared to make a presentation. Um before they begin, I just want to note for the record that like the previous applicant, I don't think I said this last time, but um. Uh we are going to hold them to the uh fifteen uh minute. Um as uh dictated by statute, I or code, can't remember which. Um but whenever uh you guys are ready, uh go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Chair members of the commission. For the record, Mike Raely with Christie Corporation. I know it's been a long night and we certainly appreciate your time and consideration. Um I'd like to introduce the project team with me tonight are Blake Smith and Blake Smith Junior with Five Bridges Development Company. Jeff House with House Moran Consulting and Scott Christie with Christie Corporation, along with the land development manager Seth Padavin. Um who works for Five Bridges. Um with that, I'm I want to pass it over to Blake and um I see Jeff has got our presentation up and I'll let them go through the the slides.
Great. Thank you, Mike. Um. Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners, thank you um for the time at this point and. I I think what I wanted to present is uh reading all the uh comments and other things that are happening here, I wanted to step back. And take a look at the bigger picture of what this uh approval is about. Uh this project's been in because there's some confusion, I think, of what this approval is about. Uh this project, we took this project into the public arena eight years ago and have had it in, I I'm guessing thirty to forty public hearing meetings. Of which ultimately led to having a development agreement approved. Uh we were all involved with that planning commission, city councils all proved that back in two thousand and eighteen. And in that development agreement, there's obligations between the city and and us. Uh it it's basically the contract between the two of us to go ahead and work together. It gives us the zoning and it gives us the rights to go and do different things in here, but. This, I think, is the key thing to take a look at. This is the land map that was attached to the development agreement. This is the areas that we talked about um and openly aired embedded that these are the areas that we're going to develop in here. And if you'll note, uh and we'll zoom back over to another one, but if you'll note, the areas that we're developing in here are identical to what we're looking for on the approval. The technical approval of the C CUP. Matches this land plan exactly. Uh there's been comments about we're expanding the land plan, we're doing different things and all that. This is the approved land plan from uh two thousand and eighteen with the development agreement. And so all we're doing at this point is implementing the development agreement and uh we have broken ground on the project at this point. And Jeff, maybe you can go over to the next one because Sienna brought it up earlier here. But thi- this, if you'll take a look and and if you can see it underneath, then it uh but basically that same identical land plan is is here. And we uh came to the planning commission, the city council a year ago. And at that point, we had villages one through seven in Espro and that's where we brought this forward and said we'd like to do the mass uh grading on this. Uh it was approved by all of us, I I should say by the planning commission and the city council. And we broke ground on this sixty days ago. All of that green area, including these these northern areas, villages eight, nine and ten are under full grading at this point. Um and I think this is where some of the confusion comes from saying, people are saying, hey, we don't want to build on it. We don't want to uh. You know, we should stop the development up there. Those dialogues happened over the past eight years and and that was culminated in the development agreement approval in two thousand and eighteen. What we're doing here now with the CUP is we're basically, we we are going through technical approvals here. Uh as Sienna said, we now have uh formal grading. Uh the reason we're bringing this forward is because villages nine and ten are now going into Espro. And with that, we're completing the area, the development areas and the grading for that. And the CUP is a technical approval. Uh at this point is or is we're requesting that in order for us to fulfill our requirements in the development agreement. In the development agreement, we must maintain. Have to build a minimum of twelve hundred homes within here and that the purpose of the land plan and where it was spread out in there. Was to develop the twelve hundred homes under the zoning that we have. Um so this, this is just an implementation of the approved development plan. And the CUP is a technical uh approval that we're going through. That approval that we're doing here right now, the the green areas have no conditions as far as what's uh can be built there with the homes and all. And working with staff and all, and Sienna went through it gracefully on there, we're adding additional conditions to try and. Um mitigate concerns and also help with the view sheds and other items with the northerly uh neighbors there. Uh we've had no uh comments or concerns from uh the city of Reno, uh excuse me, city of Sparks. Residents, uh it is the Northerly County residents that are having concerns here. Um and and again, I just want to emphasize, we're not here to hurt anyone. Um our family's been in the state ninety-nine years. Uh this is something that we've gone through a process here. It is, it's fully approved and we are basically just moving for implementation. This would be the final CUP amendment to it. Uh all the lands around this project are either homeowners associations or um. Uh basically, the lands around it are all controlled and would not be developable. Uh BLM has some land adjacent to it and homeowners association. So this is the project. Um and I just want to emphasize that this is the dialogues of not building on the on ridge lines. Those were dialogued over the past eight years. And were concluded with the approval of the development agreement. And this is a technical approval for us to implement that at this point. I think that's kind of really, I just wanted to step back and get a background because there's a lot of. Comments and questions and things that I think are confused or there might be some confusion on what this approval is. Um uh you, the commissioners here asked some technical questions. Um I'm going to hand it over to Jeff House, um who will walk you through and answer some of these as far as the hydrology and. Uh the three D presentation and all that. And Jeff, if you're still awake, I'm gonna, Jeff is actually in Atlanta, Georgia. Uh so it's a little bit later for him there, but I'm going to hand it over to him and we'll get through this. I want to make sure that we get uh the presentation. And open it up for questions for anyone here. And thank you very much. Jeff, we think you're. Jeff, you're on mute. Jeff, can you hear us? You're on mute.
Yeah, I got it. And I just sang a beautiful song and nobody heard it. That's what's so. Uh disturbing. Anyway, good evening. Chair President and Commission, I'm Jeff House, CEO of House Moran Consulting. We were retained to prepare the following slides. I'm going to go through that address. Concerns expressed by property owners to the north of five bridges site pertaining to hillside views as well as stormwater and sediment management. To accommodate these concerns, city staff asked us to prepare a pictorial simulation. Uh the hillside view with the approved development in place from points. One, two and three. How these points were chosen is that they are located at the terminus. Of public right of way, easements. And they ended driveways for these residents. Right here, Fawn Starhill Way, Petrino Way and Marie Way slash Max Street. Another thing that's important is that these points are also at the lowest in elevation. Uh of the lots of five bridges. So you get a really conservative view of what the hillside or the worst possible view of what the hillside is going to be. From those observation points. All the info was retained uh from digital sources from Washoe County GIS. US Geological Survey Database Clearing Houses, et cetera. So nobody trespass on private property. So this is the overview of where we're going to do. I'm going to take shots. I'm going to view east, south, southwest and south at each one of these points. And what you're going to see are the are the views of of the hillside. A few. Technical things to go over is that we use very advanced software to to do this imagery. We use our GIS three D analyst, spatial analyst. Arcseen software and applications and tools to develop this three D imagery. And uh each observation point, we looked at the hill, we we pan left, right or east to west. And where the view intersected the digital elevation model, that is what shows up. We put in the houses at twenty-eight feet high for two-story homes, eighteen feet high for one-story homes. And we simply alternated one-story and two-story homes across the ridge line, the northern ridge line. In villages nine and ten um and our observation height.
We have a little less than five minutes left in the applicant presentation.
Just going to breeze through this then. So anyway, uh. This is what you're going to look at from each one of the observation points. This is called a bare earth view and this is what we're going to look at. All the sites from these three points. So starting at point A, right, or point one, we're going to view to the east and pan to the west. So in the east, you see a few homes on the eastern cul-de-sac. You see a few homes where you're looking due south. You see the partial view of homes as you're looking at Village Nine Western Cul-de-sac. From observation point two, similarly, there are some terrain issues that block the the homes, but you see homes. Partially from a majority of the site. To the western cul-de-sac and then from observation point three. You don't really see that much of the east. You see the very easternmost cul-de-sac. Uh in the middle, you see. Partially a lot of the homes and then the western cul-de-sac. Before, uh, this meeting, the planning commission had requested three cross-sections, which were provided and discussed. I'm not going to go into those in lieu of time constraints. One of the things that we were asked to provide was an intersection of the existing conditions, digital elevation model with the proposed conditions elevation model, digital elevation model, and take the difference between the two. And that is the difference in the ridge lines between existing conditions and proposed conditions. Where you see red is where the ridge line has been cut down, where you see very shallow or, or yellow, uh, according to the scale over here, is very little amount of, of, of cutting. So again, from observation point one, what you see is it is just a, a little bit of difference. The, the red is the top of the ridge line of what it used to be. There's some artifacts in the G I S that can't do anything about it just because of the different data sources. Uh, again, slight reduction in, in hillside. Slight reduction in hillside, minor reduction in hillside. Uh, from observation point two, slight reduction hillside, again, slight reduction in hillside, slight reduction in these locations. So it's not like we're going from a tall mountain to, to down. We're staying in basically, um, you know, the same view from a majority of the homes. Uh, again, from point three, very little reduction in, in ridge line. So there, there's been a lot of comments about stormwater and sedimentation concerns coming off the site. I've got a very busy slide to show you, and I think I've got two minutes left or three minutes left. This site was modeled in state-of-the-art modeling, uh, a dynamic model that models all the ponds, sediment basins, pipes, everything, the ditches are all in one model. And, and we went off-site and grabbed all the, everything from off-site to on-site to evaluating what's going off-site, uh, from our property. And at every discharge point on the northern property line, and this is where another concern was, we reduced the flows, uh, significantly from pre-development conditions to post-development conditions. This was achieved because we reduced the drainage areas by the way the site was laid out and all the ditches. The sediment was reduced by temporary sediment traps as well as permanent detention ponds. We have four major ponds that are doing a lot of work in attenuating peak flows. And then we have two permanent sediment basins that take a big off-site area. And we are providing, uh, five to seven times the amount of sediment storage required for the site. And then at two key locations near Pyramid Highway, we reduce flows by over half. And particularly at Highland Ranch Parkway and Pyramid Way, we reduce it by over half.
We have completed the fifteen minutes.
All right, thank you, Casey.
I was almost done. I was almost done. I was just going to say that we have.
Just finish your, finish your thought. That's fine.
Okay, thank you. Um, as a part of the intersection improvements and the road winding of Highland Ranch Parkway, when that occurs, we are improving the culvert that is currently undersized. And we are putting in a double box culvert here that takes flow down, crosses over Pyramid, and proceeds uh, down to North Truckee Drain at Sparks Boulevard. That concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so at this time, uh, are there questions for the applicant? Uh, Commissioner Reed.
Thank you, um, Chair Prizes. Um, I did have, um, one question is, why can't you increase the current density among the villages? So you don't need a C U P to create a village?
Let me answer. Turn me on.
You're on, no, you're.
Oh, okay, thank you. Uh, thank you, Commissioner. Um, I, I think one of the, the problems that we have here is villages one, two, three, four, five, and six and seven are already, uh, sold. Those densities, if you recall, and again, some history to this, uh, we had to come back in and change villages one A, one B, and villages five to an M two zoning to get this, to get the densities up for us. But those, those villages are already set as far as they have. And so the remainder of villages eight, nine, and ten um, are the ones that we need for, to, to complete our density to get up to twelve hundred, if that answers.
And, and those, and just to add on that, those villages are zoned S F six, so we're limited on how much density we can put in those areas.
Right.
Okay, that, that answers that question.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, any other questions, Commissioner Reed?
Not at this time.
Okay, uh, then Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Question for the, um, applicant team, um, kind of along the lines of, um, Commissioner Reed's questioning. I was just kind of curious if you have a rough unit count because you've, you've made a, a couple statements saying that, um, you need this additional land for the C, covered in the C U P to be disturbed in order to meet the minimum density requirements. I'm just curious, you know, I know this is, you know, very preliminary, but I'm curious if you have kind of a number of how many units you may fall short if, if village, you know, if these, if these brown areas aren't, aren't, aren't approved in terms of meeting that minimum density in the development agreement.
Well, I, I think Commissioner Carey, we're hovering around twelve hundred units right now, um, that area. But keep in mind, it's not, it's really not feasible to just say we're not going to build in that area because this is a balanced site. We're moving, uh, millions of year, yards of, of dirt in here to balance it. Keep in mind that this was a mining site for fifteen years. Uh, they, they mined out nine million cubic yards in here, and what we're doing is coming back in and balancing it out. So the tan areas up there, uh, when, when you say if we didn't build in them, the problem that would happen to us is we would lose over a hundred units, number one, uh, which would probably drop us under the density. And number two, the site would be unbalanced at that point. And I, I don't even want to venture into studying what that means to trucks having to import, export. We could be thousands of trucks. Uh, the economics to the project could go upside, uh, upside down with it. It, it's not just a function of saying we don't want to build in that area. If this is a master plan of a master balance for the site. It's very critical that that area get, that, that, those areas in total are graded out to balance out the site here.
Follow-up if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
And I apologize, uh, Mr. Smith. Uh, it's three hours into this. I'm just kind of curious, um, by, by balancing, you're talking about grading, right?
Correct.
The technical term.
Yeah, the, the dirt in there, uh, a- as we build the site here, there's cuts and fills that balance it so that we don't have to import or export soils in here. Uh, we've been designing this for three years um, to make sure that we don't do that because I, I don't think the community as a whole or anyone wants to see importation or exportation of dirt within here. So the site as a whole, the, the tan is very critical. Uh, it's absolutely critical to balancing the site out as we go forward here.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Uh, Commissioner West.
Um, yes, I, I just have one question, um, and, and I may have missed it, but why wasn't this area included originally in, in the C U P that has already been approved?
Yeah, uh, good question, Commissioner. And what we did is, it wouldn't end, as villages one through seven went into Espro, we went in and said, what do we need to do to accomplish that at this point? The, the development agreement gives us the rights to, to develop all these areas. But we needed villages, we needed to grade parts of villages, well, all of village nine and ten, and part of village nine to accomplish the development of villages one through seven. Now that villages nine and ten are going into Espro, we're bringing it back, saying, okay, all of the village, these villages are going in and we need to accomplish the C U P for that area at this point.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, Commissioner West. Are there any other questions for the applicant at this time? Okay, seen none. Uh, this is a public comment item. Uh, and so, um, just to reiterate once again, before we go into public comment, um, we have received a, a very large number of, of, uh, public comments on this item. Um, so just to restate for those who may have, uh, just joined us or joined us more recently, uh, if you requested that your email be read by the secretary, uh, then that is going to count as your public comment. If you opted to not have the secretary read your comment, then, uh, you will be called upon to make comment once all the emails have been read. Uh, we are going to be sticking to the three-minute time limit. Um, but if your entire email is not finished in that three-minute time, uh, it will still be part of the record in its entirety and has been distributed to both myself and the other members of the commission. All right, and with that, uh, Madam Secretary, could you please read the public comment, uh, announcement?
Thank you, Chair Prizes. Um, a- as you can see here on the screen, um, again, we are showing you the link to join through Zoom or you can dial in to join using the dial-in number one six six nine nine hundred six eight three three. Meeting ID number is nine one eight six two seven seven one zero one one. Star nine to request to speak on your phone, or you will use the Zoom features, um, if you are joining through the Zoom link. Um, and raise your hand to request to speak. We will read through all of the emails that have been requested that the board clerks read previous to taking any phone callers. Um, some of the, uh, emailed public comment included some photographs. Um, both Casey and myself will do our best to share those to the best of our ability. Um, these are, you know, some are J P E X and some are PDFs that were provided. And so the quality may not be the greatest, but we will do our best. Um, moving to the first one, um, I will have Ms. Martinez, um, actually read this one as I do have a photograph for this one.
This was received by Lauren and Evelyn Acton. We oppose houses on that ridge, the lovely south boundary of Spanish Springs, as shown in the attached photo. Piles of extravig- extrovation debris are already visible on the ridge line. There is also a concern as to whether the developer will have sufficient resources to complete the Five Bridges development. Because of the difficult and rocky terrain, site preparation and util, utility installation will be very costly. At the very least, the application under consideration should be tabled until completion of the approved plan is satisfactorily accomplished. Better yet, vote no on the application on behalf of all of us who reside in Spanish Springs and North Sparks. Development of this top, topographically defining ridge should not be allowed. Thank you for your consideration of our views.
Okay, and the next email is from Janet Ayala. Please do not allow construction on the Spanish Springs Mountains. Our homes will be in danger of flooding with water, mud, and silt. Our drainage system is not capable of handling anything coming off the mountain from construction. Thank you.
The next email came from Troy Becker. I won't waste your time with a lengthy email, but I and my neighbors and family are opposed to this. The flood drain iss- issues are concerning, and frankly, you need about two more lanes for miles more of Pyramid already, let alone even more houses. Re- re-stamping every development when the infrastructure is already lacking is a foolish move. Thank you.
Lex, the next email is from Jackson Booth. Given the local public concern over the issuance of this special use permit amendment and the fact that neither the amendment nor the original permit conform to the existing R C codes, specifically numbers twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-two, I believe it is only reasonable for the city of Sparks to demand at the developer's expense additional environmental impact studies be conducted to confirm the following. Granting of the amendment and allowing its resulting development would not result in any risk of erosion due to flooding that would occur from rain or snow events that are consistent with historical rain slash snow patterns for the area being considered for development that would damage existing structures to the north and east side of the proposed development and ridge reconfiguration. Granting of the amendment and allowing its resulting development would not result in any risk to existing structures to the north and east side of the proposed development and ridge reconfiguration that could be caused from insufficient water slash silt drainage resulting from flooding due to rain or snow conditions that would be consistent with historical rain slash snow patterns for the area being considered for development. If additional E I R studies are not ordered, I think the city of Sparks should demand with appropriate contractual language that the developer and any residents and/or commercial tenants be held jointly liable for damages, physical or financial, that are caused to the residential properties located to the north and east side of the proposed development and red ridge reconfiguration as a result of the issuance of the proposed special use permit amendment. Thank you for your consideration and of my requests, as I believe they are reasonable and consistent with what any planning department would require for the long-term protection of our local community.
The next email is from Brenda Cash. This is regarding the possible amendment to conditional use permit for the developer of Old Granite Construction Quarry eighty-three Development Company, Five Bridges. I am in total opposition of this amendment. In two thousand eighteen, this developer promised not to build on the ridge, and it was already approved for build the three hundred and, or three thousand five hundred homes before. Now they want to share off like ninety feet of the ridge top and all of the beautiful rock formations up there. This would cause considerable flooding and other environmental concerns to the area. What about R C twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, or thirty-two residential, commercial planning codes or section twenty point zero four point zero one one? Please, please, please consider not passing this amendment and having them destroy Spanish Springs any more than they already have.
This next email is from Bill and Dan, Danell Chisholm. We request that the city of Sparks rejects the request to amend a conditional use permit to increase the development area generally located at five 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 Highland Ranch Parkway, Sparks, Nevada. Increasing the development area is bad for the environment, i.e. the drainage issues, traffic issues. These problems already exist out Pyramid Highway. Allowing the amendment to pass will only continue to make it worse.
The next email is from Rock Cole. Good evening, Commissioners. Hopefully by now you have all received the information about the discrep- discrepancy in acreage for this amendment. In the last meeting, the developer kept saying eighteen acres of additional disturbance area. I took the plot plan to Frank Lebre construction and had his estimator do a professional take off on pay dirt software and digitalize the plan to come up with those figures. It is a two-hundred scale plan, so there could be a five to ten percent error, but not one hundred percent error. I plan on getting another takeoff done today. I feel like we have all been deceived. The Christie Corp. has had a CAD file and knows the exact figure of added disturbance. Why didn't we get the proper number? The most damaging part of the disturbance area is the percentage of buildable land versus hillside disturbance in the form of two-to-one slopes, creating massive scars on natural slopes that are over fifteen to thirty percent gradient. The buildable land equals sixteen point seventeen acres. The added scarring on the hillside facing the valley is twenty-one or twenty-two point one acres, more than tripling the total hillside scarring in the existing C U P. This is forty-two percent buildable land to destroy and scar fifty-eight percent of a hillside. How can this even be considered for de- development? Staff has recommended approval, yet didn't even analyze the amount of disturbance area. Codes and policies are in place for hillside development. Can you imagine twenty-two football fields worth of disturbance added to this project to only add sixteen acres of buildable land? With all of the drainage off these massive slopes coming down onto existing property uh, owners with no mitigation of sediment inflow, is that legal? When this project is completed, it becomes city infrastructure and the city is responsible for it. Surely you guys don't want another Vista's disaster, not to mention eighteen hundred-foot-long access road running along a steep hillside just to sewer this addition. If there is a blockage or breach, where is that raw sewage? If there is a blockage or breach, where is that raw sewage going? Down to our backyards. This is a bad design plan, plain and simple. The developer keeps talking about the 1,200-unit agreement. The corner of Village Eight is on a 40-acre parcel that can be, that can all be built as well as other spots within the project, or the lot size can be reduced. The cost to re-engineer is nothing compared to the destruction of 22 acres of natural resources. The developer will surely build more than 1,200 homes when all is said and done, even without this piece. He's just using that number as leverage. He stated that this addition was all part, all, along, without this piece, I'm sorry. He stated this addition was all part all along. So why are we just now hearing about it? I submit that he knew it was a long shot and would just sneak it in at a later date. RC 28 limits the amount of land that may be disturbed. The timer is done, and we have a good chunk left."
Okay, the next email is from James and Samantha Crowley. "We are completely opposed to the quarry and the proposed amendment to increase the amount of land/hills they will remove for further development. The people that have lived out in Spanish Springs for decades moved out here for the open space, quiet neighbors, and our proximity to wide-open ranges. All this development is destroying what we love so much about this area. If you live out here, you are very aware of how quickly the ditch is along Pyramid from Aaron Drive down to Robert Banks Flood. If you were to permit the quarry to disturb further hillsides, there is a massive concern to that will due during periods of rain and snow. Please, listen and respect the people that actually live out here and deal with your decisions on a daily basis. Please do not permit additional land to be added to the quarry. Thank you for your time."
The next email is from Kelly Corson. "I am opposed to the additional homes being added to the Five Bridges project for the following reasons. Infrastructure to present flooding has not been established. The inevitable mud and slit coming down the mountain as there is no drainage in place to handle it. There are no easements on the north side for the builder to put proper drainage in place. Water from the City of Sparks is not allowed to flow into Washoe County. This addition does not adhere to RC 28, 29, 30, 32, or section 20.04.011 of established ordinances. According to the City of Sparks, our ridge tops and outcroppings are protected from builders. Hydroseeding is ineffective in this type of soil. This additional construction would infringe on our rights and inflict undue mental anguish, emotional distress, and litigation that would surely follow. It is upsetting to think of the destruction this additional construction would cause to our area as well as the devastating impact on local wildlife. Please do not approve this project."
The next email is from R. Crump. "As a resident of the City of Sparks, I am urging you to stop and do not approve the addendum to add additional land use and homes to the Five Bridges project above homes and property. I have serious concerns about how and why this is happening. What is the projected effect of shearing 90 feet off of the ridge tops and removing rock outcrops? Has this been studied? Was there an environmental impact evaluation performed? Was there an evaluation on the effect of the land stability done? The project does not adhere to RC 28, 29, 30, or 32, or section 20.04.011. Why would anyone even attempt to push this addendum through with this knowledge in hand? It certainly sets the city up for a lawsuit for having ignored these codes if anything goes wrong, doesn't it? Where is the increased easement allowing for proper drainage and the additional infrastructure to keep existing homes and backyards from flooding with water, mud, and silt? The Lemon Valley flooding debacle is fresh and should be a wake-up call for this one. This added amendment was recently rejected by the city due to insufficient infrastructure in place by the builder to mediate the flooding and damage that will occur. Why is it suddenly being reconsidered now? I cannot locate a copy of any new/revised infrastructure plan being submitted. Before handing carte blanche to the developer, please consider the financial liability for the City of Sparks as well as the multiple effects on the existing residents. No one wants a Lemon Valley catastrophe on their hands."
The next email is from Leonard and Sri Danner. "We oppose the request for additional disturbance limits. We attended the original community meeting, and the developer assured us that the building would remain on the other side of the hill because the hillside was too steep to build on, so we did not object. To change the rules now is inconceivable, and we live at the bottom of the hill on the north at 7,500 Marie Way. We were not informed of this meeting, although we were unquestionably affected. Please report our strenuous objection to this action."
The next email is from Nancy Danner. "My name is Nancy Danner. I have lived in the area for over 25 years. My front porch faces the ridge. While I cannot undo what was previously approved for development of our homes, I am hopeful my concerns for additional land use will be taken into consideration before decisions are made. I am writing in regards to the Five Bridges request for additional land use and homes for the development. We have not been granted any relief from this onslaught of development in that they keep requesting more and more, and the council/board powers that be continue to grant the requests of the developer. I am hopeful that the commissioners members have looked into how detrimental it would be to allow additional building and land grabbing for this development. Without boring all of you with the residential planning codes, it is urgent that you realize the impact of the building on this slope. There is no easement to allow for proper drainage. We have had the drainage ditch on Dolores Drive flood many times during a rainy-wet year. The drainage ditch is not adequate and cannot sustain floodwaters without damage to Dolores Drive and Pyramid Highway. They still have not been able to correct the drainage issues on Pyramid Highway. Would it be possible, and within reason to ask, that you take into consideration the residents who have made their homes out here? I am pretty sure if you were living where I live or where my neighbors actually live in the path of this development, you would never be approving this request. The developer has requested and pretty much gotten everything he has asked for with absolutely no regard for the concerns of the residents. I am asking you to please deny this additional land request. Those of us living in this area have an appreciation of our open spaces, while developers from out of state do not much regard for the beauty of our valley. I respectfully ask that you allow us to keep what is remaining on that ridge. While my email does not come close to addressing all of the issues the request entails, I understand there are time constraints when the public addresses either in person or email. I am ever hopeful you will do the right thing and deny this request. Thank you."
The next email is from Bob and Linda Davis. "We did not receive notice of the meeting, even though we live within a mile of seeing, hearing, and suffering the intrusion of this project to our quiet neighborhood. We read the original plan for this development and had thought that the northern ridge line of the development would remain undisturbed. This amendment and the earthwork that we see going on will remove the ridges and bring unwanted noise, destruction of our primitive views, and very possible wreckage to the properties very near and below the new housing. The construction of additional drainage into our overburdened ditches and likely addition of new roadways for increased traffic into and through our neighborhood are an assault on the privacy and security of everyone in this rural area. Is this another bait and switch and underhand played to push just a little bit further? Please do not approve the further destruction of the ridge line."
The next email is from Robin Down. "I am opposed to the additional homes being added to the Five Bridges project for the following reasons. Infrastructure to prevent flooding has not been established. The inevitable mud and silt coming down the mountain as there is no drainage in place to handle it. There are no easements on the north side for the builder to put proper drainage in place. Water from the City of Sparks is not allowed to flow into Washoe County. This addition does not adhere to RC 28, 29, 30, 32, or section 20.04.011 of established ordinances. According to the City of Sparks, our ridge tops and outcroppings are protected from builders. Hydroseeding is ineffective in this type of soil. This additional construction would infringe on our rights and inflict undue mental anguish and emotional distress and litigation would surely follow. It is heartbreaking to think of the destruction this additional construction would cause to the area as well as devastating impact on local wildlife. Please do not approve this project."
The next email is from Lisa Durgan. "I am writing to oppose the addendum to the Five Bridges development, which would permit the builder to add additional homes, cut into ridge lines, and potentially create a dangerous situation for existing homes on the downward slope from this development. Spanish Springs has already seen what poor planning and development can do to our drainage systems and hillsides. Every time there is a protracted rainstorm-